Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Change that tone. What, call the meeting to one? Where's that coming from? If anyone's recording, can I make it known? We... A few preliminary items to take care of. One is the minutes for December 9th. If the board has read them, I would look for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained?
The minutes, yes.
It's the thirteenth.
Thirteenth. I did, the thirteenth comes on the Monday this month.
Let's see.
Are we good? Next item is, if anyone needs, look at the agenda. There's copies on the front table here. The next item is an approval not required plan for map 105 lot C1, C2, C3, 1,002A for Zero Charlotte Furnace Road, Sarah John Realty LLC. Care of J.C. Engineer.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you want to hear these with the special permit, because this A and R is contingent upon the approval of that special permit. That's on the agenda for the public hearing this evening. So, I'm not sure if you want to hear those concurrently.
We could do that if it doesn't affect your plans.
No, does not affect the plans. This, the A and R plan that is before you is conditional upon the approval of the special permit, which is on the agenda tonight under the public hearing portion.
You just want to stay here longer, I can tell.
Well, you can skip over me and go to the next one, or you can hear me now.
No.
I'd prefer to be heard now, but...
Thank you. I'm sure the people waiting for the other items will be appreciative.
Okay.
Thank you. We'll take it up with the public hearing.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Kahoon Ave., Baypoint Drive Information Session.
To introduce this, the planning board has a special permit, site plan review and subdivision approval of the Baypoint Drive Windward Pines project. And as part of that project, there's been, there was discussion about access onto Kahoon. The board and its decision on the Windward Pines project had approved a restriction of construction vehicles on Kahoon, but did not take it further than that. What's being proposed is a closure of Kahoon with emergency access only to Baypoint Drive Extension. There's... And potentially to the Baypoint Drive as well. There's been a lot of discussion on this. There was a long history of the review of Kahoon Drive and Baypoint Drive as part of the condominium project down in the lower left corner of the plan up against the, on the easel there. One of the restrictions in the original approval of the Baypoint Village, the condominium project, was that the zoning board of appeals said it was a right turn only. And they wanted to sign up at the entrance, at the intersection of Baypoint Drive Extension and Kahoon Road, which extends across that, that plan. There was... I pulled a memo from the file that was done in 1997 by the chairman of the Board of Appeals, who was also on the Board of Appeals at the time of 1987 when the approval was made for the Baypoint Village. One of the... He noted again that the right turn only coming out was a standard that had not been challenged. But I think if you read into the memo of the Board of, and the decision of the Board of Appeals, you have to figure that they were somewhat ambivalent about restricting access onto a public road. And, but the restrictions stood and stands on the permit application and on the permit decision of the Board of Appeals from 87. So, in the preparation of the newest plan, we've had some discussions with the developer, Tim Fay, Stone Street Development of Windward Pines. And Stone Street has prepared, Beta, their consultant, Beta Engineering, has prepared the plan, the road configuration plan showing up on the board there at this point. And unless there are other questions that I can answer, I'll turn it over to Mr. Fay.
Good evening, gentlemen. Happy New Year. I haven't been here a while. It's nice to be back. We are, this evening, looking to advance the conversation and the concept of addressing a couple of conditions that currently exist that many people are not particularly happy with. First, the Kahoon Road off of Onset Ave. has a certain level of traffic that the residents on that portion of the road are unhappy with. There's a distinction between Baypoint Village condominiums that have been there for many, many years and our new development. So, originally, in the approval concepts, there was this perception of restriction from people on our side of Kahoon Road, turning left and using Kahoon Road out to Onset Ave as a means of egress from the property. Over the years, the amount of traffic on that road has increased. It's increased with the activity on the golf course. Our golf course activity has increased, as well as the development of Windward Pines. The, at the time, the road was built, GPS and your instructions in your vehicle were not part of your daily life. Right now, everyone uses them on a regular basis. And if you were to instruct your GPS to come to the Baypoint Club to play golf, and you were coming in off of Cranberry Highway, it would take you in Kahoon Road. That's the Google way of getting you to the Baypoint Club. So, the road deals with a little bit more traffic, maybe, than it has in years past. And at the point of where the road currently is, it's about 18 feet wide. And it's a curved road, heavily wooded, where we currently have golf carts that go back and forth. And it's been a condition that, from the day I bought the golf cart, I've always kind of been a little bit concerned about. So, this evening is to start a conversation about can we do something that would be a benefit to the Onset Ave to Baypoint Golf Course property residents? I think they would welcome the opportunity to limit access on that road while we continue to provide emergency service into the Baypoint Village and into the Windward Pines development. So, there would be a section of road here that would be abandoned, which is actually not in the correct place. It's interesting, the survey data, the road was built, they missed by about 30 feet. So, we would cul-de-sac and turn around and come back out and provide emergency access to this existing cul-de-sac. And the purpose of this evening is to start a conversation, to see if this is something that might have some public worth to it. And it certainly is something that we feel would enhance the Baypoint Golf Course and the Windward Pines and the Baypoint Village property development.
You wouldn't know the length of, what the finished length of Kahoon Road would be?
So, it's continuous right now. There is kind of an existing area that is a... A dirt turnaround area that's currently used. But I don't know, because it is continuous, when the road goes all the way down into Baypoint, I don't know what that would be. But it's certainly something that we can develop pretty rapidly.
On Google Maps, the distance is approximately 2,000 feet on Kahoon. The difference between the access, on the access point from Baypoint Drive Extension, the intersection there, to the intersection of Kahoon and Onset is about 2,500 feet total. If you go, if you take a right out of Baypoint Drive Extension and go around down to Baypoint Entrance and back up to the intersection of Kahoon and Onset, it's about 5,000 feet.
So, from Onset Ave to that conceptual cul-de-sac is...
It's about 2,000 feet.
Well, we've all heard the complaints from the residents of Kahoon Road. And I think I have an equal amount of testimony from the, is it Baypoint Village, of opposing this procedure.
I have a question.
Hi, Mr. Fay, how are you?
Good, Mr. Swinton, how are you?
I'm great. The amount of traffic, I understand there's been an increase of traffic into the entire project. So, if this was cut off, Baypoint Drive itself is not new. I'll just say it that way. Is it going to be able to support the amount of traffic that...
Oh, it sure will. What happens in a development like this is traffic that is specific to residents has a different look and feel to it than traffic coming in from out of town or from somewhere else trying to make a tee time or trying to get to a particular job site. So, residential traffic in an area where residents live has a certain look and feel to it, as opposed to general public. And it certainly has the ability to handle that.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but, I mean, I'm trying to remember driving in, because I've visited there many, many times. But it seems to me it's probably about the same size that Kahoon Road is today?
The entrance into Baypoint Drive in our development plan will be redone and expanded.
Okay.
The existing road is certainly wider than Kahoon Road at that end of the property.
Yeah, at that end.
That's about 18 feet wide.
At the end there, it is very narrow.
Around a curve that's heavily treed. So, there's always a bit of concern about what's happening in that section of the road.
Can you, and then, secondly, can you describe for me in a little more detail the emergency access capabilities from cul-de-sac to cul-de-sac?
The concept would be very simple. It would be gates with the equipment on it that all the MS vehicles would have for it to raise automatically. And it would be, it would be similar here. And the gates would come up as emergency vehicles go through. That's the, that's the thought right now. And again, this evening's purpose is a conversation...
Sure.
To try to get some thoughts and input.
But it is, your thinking, your current thinking right now is, it is a physical blockade.
Right now, it's a gated...
Yeah.
There is a gate here that doesn't allow any access.
The reason I ask is I'm familiar with a development in another city that has emergency access ports like that with no gate, and they might as well just be city streets.
Sure.
You know, so this is, this is different than what I'm familiar with.
Right.
That's all I have for right now.
So, are the gates here in terms of construction traffic?
It's not, no, I think we have pretty good control of construction traffic. I don't think it's about construction traffic. I do think that there is a level of golf course-related activity with the invention of GPS that just takes you on Kahoon Road. When I come from Rhode Island, if I were to put my Baypoint Clubhouse address into my GPS system, it takes me Kahoon Road. So, we know that that happens frequently.
So, I'm not an IT person. I'm sorry. I'm not an IT person, but I think some of this can be corrected simply with a conversation with Google.
Boy...
I've had to do this before on construction sites, Mike. Some of it is the address that you're actually using. So, it's simple, it's just trick the system and change the address, and it pushes you to a short distance. I don't know, does this actually decrease the volume of traffic? Or do we just have people entering two different ways, circling around and going back?
That's what I'm looking at. I'm looking at traffic coming down Kahoon, realizing they can't get through anymore.
Yeah.
Going around the cul-de-sac and heading back. So, now you're effectively doubling the traffic on that road.
Sure, once, and then hopefully they don't do it again.
To Mark's point, I make my living in the same world.
Yeah, right.
And in a conversation with Google, you've got a better chance of being president.
I...
That doesn't take place.
I happen to agree with you.
So, it's going to take, it could take literally years for Google to reevaluate that road and determine that it's not a viable access to the club. In the meantime, all these people that live on that road are suffering with the folks that are coming down, circling around, and going back.
Well, they were coming down anyway.
But now they're, now they're traveling that road.
And they most likely would have gone out the same way.
So, you, but you're not solving the problem. Isn't this whole exercise to solve the traffic problem?
Yep.
And I don't see this as being a solution.
Okay.
Signage.
Yeah, I'm a little confused, because all the complaints that ended up here were about commercial vehicle traffic. And that seemed to subside as your completions...
Yes.
Came about.
Right.
And now, you're just talking traffic in general?
Yes. Yes, I'm not talking about the, so, here, we are on the backside of the completion of that phase of construction. And it'll be winding down in its entirety in the coming months. And then it will redirect itself down into the middle to the southern end of the property. And that should not be an issue here. So, we are, we're not talking about construction activity. We're talking about daily activity. We're talking about traversing the road as going from one hole to the other on the golf course, the narrowness of the existing road and the bend in the road and the tree cover. So, I think it's not an ideal condition. I think that the Onset Ave Kahoon Road residents would be greatly in favor of this. We did have an informational meeting a couple of weeks ago with the Baypoint Village residents, and quite a few came. We had a nice hour and a half discussion. There were some people that were against this, and there were many people that were for it. So, it is about traffic and about safety. It also is about creating a, what I consider to be a different look and feel to the Baypoint and Windward Pines development.
Can you give me, can you give me a little more color on your last statement in terms of look and feel and what you're trying to accomplish here?
So, one of the, one of the challenges of the Baypoint Golf Course has, from the day that I have purchased it, been the multiple access points to the golf course. So, people can come up and park back there and play a few holes. And our clubhouse is a quarter of a mile away. And it's hard to figure out who's doing what at what time. In addition to that, the golf carts go across that road to go from the sixth hole to the seventh hole, and then back again from the seventh hole to the eighth hole. And that always is, you know, a concern with who's looping around the corner there. So, we think the look and feel of the golf course changes by limiting vehicular traffic there. And we think that it adds a level of, it adds value to the real estate being a gated community with no gates, really.
Except for emergency access.
Except for emergency access. I'm talking about internal access within the residential neighborhoods by residents. The emergency vehicles will be able to access off of Onset Ave Kahoon Road.
It seems that the concept makes a quieter neighborhood for those on Kahoon. It provides a better golf course for the Windward Pines. I think the people that are most impacted negatively by it are the ones from, from the Baypoint Village and their ability, if they're moving east or north, to take a left turn and go down Kahoon onto Onset.
I agree with that. I think the Onset Ave Kahoon Road residents all will be very, very much in favor of this. Certainly, the Windward Pines development is very much in favor of this. And I think that there's mixed review from the Baypoint Village Association. There are some people that are very much for this and some people that are very much against this.
Mr. Fay, what is the status of the prohibition of a left turn?
So, it's my understanding that at the time the Baypoint Village condominium was approved, there was a restriction from that group turning left and going out Onset Ave, going out Kahoon Road to Onset Ave. I think that the residents of Kahoon Road feel that that's a very real restriction that hasn't been respected. I think, and I know there's a couple of residents here from Baypoint Village that will speak to this issue. I know that many people use that. And I don't think that they feel it's a restriction that's in existence today.
Do you know if it is, if it is included in the master deed?
That restriction was included in the master deed. It was a condition of approval. But I don't think there's ever been any type of enforcement as to signage and/or not turning left on the Baypoint Village Association. And there's a couple of members here that might be able to answer that better than I can.
Yes, sir.
I can help you with that. I'm a...
Come forward and identify yourself, please.
Yeah, my name's Mike Tobin. I can help you with that little pheasant. Years ago, when Perez came here in Baypoint Development, okay? One of the stipulations was, and these people at the condominium know it when they bought their place, okay? That when you come out of Baypoint Drive, you take a right turn only. That's why the road was built that way. Signage was supposed to go up. Well, as time passed, you know, we've come up to the town year after year for years and times, and five, 10 times a year. Signage never went up. You know, it just got all brushed away. But this proposal, I heard complaints from people up at Baypoint Village is, you know, they want, you know, they want access in and out because of emergencies. I can see you put an emergency road, and that's great, you know, where the cul-de-sacs are. And you're talking about a gate. Sometimes gates don't work. They'll say, you know, the power goes or whatever. You know, you could put it up there with signage. Emergency vehicle only, do not enter. And put a horrendous fine up there, $2,500. I almost stole the cameras.
Sure.
You know what I mean? I'll take care of the cameras. So, when they come by, you can find them. After a while, they won't come there.
I think, well, I, I think I'm wide, I'm wide open to whatever the best means of emergency access is, in whatever form that might be.
But the initial intent was Kahoon Road would not be used. That was part of the agreement with the Board of Selectmen at that time, the Board of Appeals, Perez Corporation Development, that Kahoon Road wouldn't be used. It egress, then enter and leave through Baypoint the road. That was the whole thing why the development on. Now, Kahoon Road is a tiny, tiny road. It can't handle the traffic. But the people in the village drove year after year up and down that road, 30, 40, 50 miles an hour, traffic, everything else, okay? Their biggest concern is safety, and they need this and they need that. But they never took care of our safety when our kids were out in that street plane and everything else. Okay? So, I don't feel bad for you, but yous do need emergency access. And this gentleman's providing it right here. Whether they put gates or not beside the point. You know, signage, I'd be happy with signage with the cul-de-sac. And put a major fine in there, something ridiculous. And I heard of the board, somebody said today, well, that's a public road, you can't do that. It's not a state road, it's a town road. We can do what we want to do with our towns when it comes to community development stuff. When it's a betterment for the town, we're trying to, you know, progress into the next generation. So, he's got a good plan.
Thank you.
But the initial intent was Kahoon Road would not be used. And now, if you leave it open for all of these other ones with the new development, everything else, the road can't handle it.
My question still is, does anyone know if it is part of the master deed of the condominiums by which owners would have, have the obligation?
Yeah, they voted it out legally, you can't do that for the association.
My name's John Madonna. I live in the Baypoint Village. I've owned property there for 16 years. There's never been any signage... In the master deed is reference to making a right turn only as you're leaving Baypoint Drive Extension. As I say, there's never been any signage or anything that I'm aware of. That section of the master deed was changed at a later date, I believe in 2001, by a vote of the condominium owners, and that was filed with the master deed at the registry of deeds. So, there's some legal questions here. Maybe town council could look into this. I also have some issues over the schematic here. That cul-de-sac that's depicted there is owned by Baypoint Village. To my knowledge, there's been no contact with the village people about extending the bypass road through there. This is a matter of public safety. The Onset Fire Department is moving to a new headquarters on Onset Road. They're increasing the response by an additional mile if they have to go in Baypoint Drive. I understand this potentially could be gates and on and on and on. Mr. Fay has addressed the issue of the safety of the golf carts crossing. I'll agree with him. It is an issue. That roadway was there long before the golf course was. Perhaps you could put a tunnel under or do some alternative measure. I have questions about ownership of the land adjacent to the cul-de-sac. There was reference to a gate. There was a gate there that is controlled by the power company. So, I don't see where, we're just going to automatically put in a roadway, and then who's going to maintain it? Who's going to plow snow there? You're doing away with a public way. I live on a private way currently that abuts a public way. I don't want to go from a private way to another private way. Too many uncertainties with it. Too many questions, too many legal issues. This is, this is not a good plan in my, in my mind.
Thank you.
Do we have these automated gates anywhere else in town for emergency services?
I can't think of any automated ones other than, you know, there's gated areas for emergency access. I don't know if they're controlled with a key or if they break away or what the, what the story is.
Do you know, Howie?
Yeah.
Key.
So, is there a guideline for these gate systems other than the master gate construction?
There are different types of emergency gates and it depends on how much money you want to spend, how complex the, the gate system is.
I, I think generally, a fire truck on its way to an emergency and that gate doesn't go up, kind of doesn't matter. I think it just goes right through the gates. I think they break away. I think. And, and I, again, I'm prepared to take this to the next level and come back with all of that very specific data. We, we have a concept plan. We have a wonderful discussion this evening. I can come back with additional specific information if it's a concept worth pursuing, which I believe it is. With respect to some of the comments just made, I have had two meetings with the condominium board of the Baypoint Village Group. They are generally in support of this. We had an informational meeting with members of the association. It was a great turnout. It was just a couple of weeks ago, I think there were sixty-four people. And, and it was a great discussion. There was some very positive and some support for it and some not positive support for it. So, I think in this process, there's quite a bit of very specific information that can be garnered to take this to the next level. This is a concept plan, the engineered plan. When you look at the road, the road is actually not in the right place. The, the, the survey documentation for the town shows it about thirty feet in a different direction, hugging the perimeter. It, it will clean up quite a few issues that have been lingering for a lot of years since this develop, development was originally organized. The condominium association did in 1994, I don't think it was 2002, I think it was 1994, they did amend their master deed and I spoke to the president of the association about this. They did it at their annual meeting. They came up with a resolution. They signed the resolution and they recorded the resolution, but it was a one-party agreement. It didn't include the town or anyone else. So, I'm not, we can say there's legal issues about it. I don't think there's much of a legal issue. They, at a, at their own meeting, changed a rule that was a condition and, and recorded it. So, there, there are issues to resolve that are very resolvable and I think that this is a really solid plan that would address a lot of different concerns, both on the early part of Onset, Windwood and the, and the Baypoint Village Condominium Association.
I, I see, I see three.
Mark, he was your.
I see three, three instances where this road is used. One is for the residents and the primary concern being emergency response. This, this solution does not hinder emergency response. Just blast through the gate, you know, in the case of the letters that were here, you know, minutes count. I, I see that the emergency services can get through this solution. The construction, I agree, is, fades away in the night in a very short time. The, the issue comes back to where I started was, if this is an address issue with Google, that traffic's not going to stop. It's, you're going to program that in, it's still going to send you up there and it's going to turn you around on a cul-de-sac and solve for that part for me? I, I don't know. It's, you're going to put a sign at the end of the road, say, wrong turn dummy, go to the next exit? I, I don't. How do you solve for that? Because the cul-de-sac just is going to continue to spin people around. Like Mike said, it's going to double the traffic.
A lot of roads change in the, in the state of Massachusetts and they have to be changed on Google. This isn't the only incident. I mean, they're constantly changing roads, one way in them and doing everything else.
But out of.
Construction, buildings, developments like this.
Yeah, you're going to come to the mic.
Yeah, roads are always being changed on Google. It's something that's going to take time. It's going to take time. You know, Google's a problem, yes, but it's something that has to be rectified, no matter what you do. Whenever you change a, a road in town, Google is a problem. No matter whose town it is.
No, I understand that. So, let's just, so if, if, if that's the top priority is to decrease traffic because we've increased the population here, the popularity of golf, whatever the reason is, this is not solving the biggest of the three problems.
How, how do you figure that?
Because this is just sending people up the same road to turn around and go out the same way.
Well, and if you don't do this, they're going to come up there anyway with you. Google has to be changed.
No, I understand that.
All right.
So, I think that the, the order of things is, get, get the adoption. First of all, I think it's easier to trick the system and give them an address a thousand foot down the road and no one's going to take this right-hand turn anymore.
Whatever it takes to solve the problem, but Google has to be addressed.
But we're going through a whole lot of.
So, it's just, just to that one, to that one point, our pavilion building at Baypoint is 10 Baypoint Drive. Our golf course clubhouse is 19 Baypoint Drive. And when I put those addresses into my GPS system, it takes me in Kahoon Road. So.
Both addresses.
Yes.
Pardon me?
Both addresses will bring you to.
Either of those two addresses will bring me in and I, you know, I still would prefer a flip phone, so I'm not your IT guy, but it's a, it's a, it's an issue.
It could be potentially, without exaggeration, it could be years.
Right.
Before Google will get that corrected.
But the years will go by anyway and then it will be corrected.
The couple of issues that I see is, you're creating more dead-end streets over a thousand feet, which is against our own rules and regs or bylaw. So, you're creating one, if not two. Now, whether the emergency access gates counter that, I, I guess that's up to public safety to determine. Possibly, maybe between the end of pavement and the proposed cul-de-sac, you made that exit only, you know, one way, might resolve some of the strain. I think we're all looking for something mutually beneficial.
Sure.
For all involved, whether it's the village, the existing condos or the, or Windwood Pines. And I don't, I don't know that this is it myself. Seems to me that we're creating others, solving one problem but creating others.
What happens to, what happens to the abandoned portion of Kahoon Road?
It looks like it becomes part of the golf course in that rendition.
In that rendition, yes, it gets, it becomes part of the golf course. And additional conversation would be that that section of Kahoon Road that is on the Windwood Pine side would become Baypoint Drive. So, this could have been a wider view.
This is the termination of Kahoon Road right now. There is a paper cul-de-sac that terminates Kahoon Road and then this is the start of Baypoint Drive. So, we would be cleaning this condition up as well and then this would just be Baypoint Drive that run to Baypoint Drive Extension. That's kind of logical, isn't it? From where I came in and what I inherited was Baypoint Drive termination on a paper street, continuation of Baypoint Drive, now it's Kahoon Road, go on Kahoon Road for a while and then you're on Baypoint Drive Extension. I'm not exactly sure why, why that was the case. So, this would be changed to be just the continuation of Baypoint Drive. So, no, for our perspective, it would be Baypoint Drive. The Baypoint Drive Extension would continue to be the extension, but that's a confusing condition anyway.
Would long, would long-term plans call for Baypoint Drive to be extended up into what is now the Kahoon Road section that's about to be abandoned?
It would terminate.
Housing? So, right now this road just continues and it would just terminate with a turnaround. This is the last unit that we're building, it's part of Windwood Pine.
So, there's no plans for additional housing based on that acquisition of.
Absolutely not. But that is a great idea.
Can I ask you a couple questions and put my few words in?
If you come forward and identify yourself, please.
So, my name is Almalette. I'm actually new to Baypoint Village. I had a couple of questions. One is, how many people have complained on Kahoon Road? How many residents?
I don't know that number off the top of my head.
I can bring them all up if you'd like.
Is it, is it like multiple?
I can bring the whole road up. We bought, we bought this twenty-five years ago.
Can we keep this discussion?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, to what, why, why do you ask that?
The next question is.
I'm sorry, why did you ask that question?
Well, because I, I've heard that people complain, but I haven't like met, do you know what I mean? Like I haven't interacted with them to know if it was a true complaint or if.
The blood that's been received. I've had about five people.
All the same thing about the traffic?
About traffic, yes.
Has it been more, has it been since Bay Village opened or has it been since the construction?
As I said earlier, that most of the complaints that we received were about the construction vehicles using the road.
Now, another question I have is with the traffic, has there been any fatalities?
None, none that I'm aware of.
Due to people supposedly driving thirty-five miles an hour?
No, not that I know of.
My biggest thing is, is the safety. I've only lived there two months. Has it been two months? About two or three months and we've already have, had a couple of ambulances that had come in to.
Are you talking the village?
Baypoint Village Extension. And my biggest concern is for the elderly. And although a gate might work, but what if the snow is four feet high? Does the, does the emergency vehicle still have the ability to plow through? You know, that should be everybody's concern. Is the safety, it's, it's a morality thing? Like let's think about somebody's life. Because it's important to the time-wise if they're coming by Kahoon, depending on where they're coming from, if they have to go through Kahoon or if they have to go further down to Baypoint, that's, might not be a lot of time, but it may be just enough that somebody loses their life. And I, I'm not saying that the Kahoon Road people don't have, you know, a good word, you know, that the traffic is probably excessive, but there's got to be a way that we can work it out between Bay Village and Kahoon residents. I mean, there's got to be something that we can do. I don't know about signage. There is actually signage there, correct? Like it says no throughway and no delivery trucks?
We have extensive signage on the construction at the early part of Kahoon Road.
Yeah, I do travel that way too. It is, it's a convenient access. I do not drive thirty-five miles an hour. It is narrow and I've, I've said that the money that's going to be putting into, and I agree with you, the excessive travel is going to be now turning around in somebody else's driveway, multiple driveways, driving back and forth. And I say put the money into fixing up the road and putting a sidewalk. There's not just one golf court cross, there's three or four, I think three. So, it's not just that corner, there's multiple. So, I say put a sidewalk. All the money that's going to be put into the gates and closing the roads and just widen the road a little bit, put a sidewalk, make it more convenient for the people that live on the streets. You know, I mean, people should be walking, put sidewalks and, you know, whatever it takes, lights, some flashing lights. I know the hospital I work at, now they have a stop sign with, with lights because people do not stop. As a matter of fact, they don't stop at any stop sign. They, most, most of the crossings today, four ways, they're, they're all yields. I don't know if anybody has noticed, there's literally no stop signs. There's no person in the road that barely stops at a stop sign. They're more, they pull out into the middle of the junction and, I don't know. I just think that if we could all work together.
Well, I think.
The safety of the elderly.
I think that's Mr. Fay's intent.
It is our, it clearly is our intention.
Yeah.
There's, the life safety conversation is a very serious one.
Yeah, it should be, the most.
We, we have confusion with Baypoint Drive and Baypoint Drive Extension. We have, we have a 19 Baypoint Drive, which is our clubhouse, and there is a 19 Baypoint Drive Extension who, the gentleman, I just met him for the first time last week, he was handing me a FedEx package from our golf, that was supposed to go to our golf shop. And the, the running joke, I said, since I got here, I've always wanted to meet you. When I said hello, I said, do you have about a hundred Titleist drivers in your basement? Because Titleist only goes to his house, he, they don't get to our pro shop. And he laughed. And he said, as much as I'm laughing about it, this is, this is terrible. Now, that condition's been there for a while. We've been 19 Baypoint and he's been 19 Baypoint. But then as we were assigned numbers on Baypoint Drive for Windwood Pines, we have now since doubled up again where we've got four new homes that are, pick a number, 46 Baypoint Drive and there's a 46 Baypoint Drive Extension. And they're getting each other's mail and I have always said, we've had fire engines come into the pavilion building hot and ambulances looking for a particular address that's up in the villages. And we redirect them right out as quick as we can, but that amount of time being interrupted, you're right, that is five minutes that might make a difference in someone's life.
Could you give?
Different issue.
Could you give the club an Onset Ave address so they go in?
So, I, you know, I'm wide open at this point. I'm not, you know.
Anyway, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
To, to, to her comment, I think if I could just make one point. With respect to traffic, there's, there's two forms of communication taking place. One is the Kahoon Roads admirable diligence in monitoring our construction traffic for the past eleven months while we have been building. We, just so that you know, we have written into our subcontractor contracts that they have to use the main entrance and that they're fined a hundred dollars if they're caught using Kahoon Road.
It's not as bad as Baypoint was. I mean, Perez, when he put it in.
Yeah.
You know, your trust has been moderate.
We've, we've, we've worked hard at it. I think there was quite a few complaints early and I'm hoping they've tailed as we've been better at policing that. That's one set of traffic conversation and complaints that you've received that you're most familiar with right now. I think the conversation of traffic on Kahoon Road has been going on long before I got here. It's been going on since the start of, of the Baypoint Village condo.
I don't know if you've been to Ederville at all, but as you approach Ederville, there's a, a driveway to their back and there's a big sign, your GPS is wrong.
Keep going, I love it.
All right, well, I think we've gotten quite a bit of information here. I don't know if, if we've provided you with any direction, but I think probably the path of community. of community outreach is, is still probably your best resort.
So, what, George, what is the next step if Mr. Faye wants to move forward with this? He's having an information session tonight to go formal, how does this work?
Uh, I would say, first of the road commission- There, there are two aspects to this. One is the, is the modification of the special permit site plan review and subdivision that the planning board is responsible for. The other is the abandonment of the right-of-way, which is essentially the opposite of a, a taking of a, of a town road, which means that the board of selectmen have to put the warrant article on town meeting, for town meeting action.
Sure, I'll take one of those.
And town meeting has to vote the change in the, in the right-of-way.
Is there a sequence to these events? Is the planning board in special permit?
Well, I see, as I say, I see it as the, uh, two different, two different, potentially parallel actions, but more than likely, what he wants to do is first to go to the abandonment of the way and then come back for the modification of the site plan review and special permit. The layout does show on the, on that plan.
Is that the actual layout?
I have one more question.
So, to, the, the action on the, excuse me, I'll finish. The, the action on the, on the, if it is exactly the opposite of, of acceptance of a, of a town layout, would be that the selectmen, uh, ask for, ask for a, a layout plan, which, which eliminates the, the layout. There's a, the title search is done on the ownership of that and, and the access to it. And that the planning board has a, an advisory role in the, in the process. But then it would take the town meeting action to actually, uh, affect the change in the right-of-way.
George, could I ask Mr. Faye a couple of questions?
Sure.
Tim, would it make sense to, instead of putting a cul-de-sac at the end of the condominium project, simply loop that back around onto Bay Point Drive, so that there is a continuous circle there?
I'm not sure what you mean by that.
Instead of having this-
So, this is existing?
Well, then we bring it around something like this. So, that ties together. And you could still have the connection between here. But what I'm suggesting is, from this cul-de-sac here, simply loop this around so that it becomes continuous. Because the person who's living at the end of here, he's got only one way out, and that's the long way around through everybody else's driveway up to this point.
But that's his existing condition.
I, I know, but from a public safety standpoint, it also makes sense to have a second way to get at least back to here. That's pretty dense. And if they, if they put a fire line across that road, and you want to get out for some reason, you're not gonna get across that fire line. At least you've got a second way that you can get in and out. I'm not here to debate whether or not it should be dead-ended on Cahoon Road, but I think an answer to that would be simply to put up a sign at the end that says it's a dead-end street. That's done all the time. But I, I think to have that connection would be a good thing, because it does give you a little bit more circuitous, um, circulation for traffic to get in and out, even though you're still going down Bay Point Drive to the main entrance at Onset Avenue. The other thing that I, I question, and there's, there's some technical things here that would have to be worked out, and it isn't necessary to talk about it here. But one of the things that certainly the residents of the condominium association would want to look at would be, when you get to that point, if it all becomes Bay Point Drive, address numbers are gonna have to change. Somebody's are.
So-
And the, the second, and the second thing is that you might want to look into whether or not Onset Fire District has a water main that goes through there, and whether or not there would have to be some sort of an easement granted to the, to the Onset District to maintain the water main where it is.
Correct. They do, and, and that's located on some of our different plans.
Okay. But some of the other technical details that Ken has alluded to, yeah, there were things like that. And then, even if the town discontinues Cahoon Road, that portion of it that you want to eliminate completely will still be a private way until it gets discontinued by this board.
Right.
So, some other little things that go on there as well.
You don't think making your entrance and making everyone on this end of the development go past your golf operation is gonna have a negative impact?
No, I think they're doing it now. So, I think they're supposed to be doing it now.
If there's nothing more from the board, I would thank you and-
Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Appreciate everyone's time, thank you very much.
Tim, I just have one more question with Tom. Uh, you were talking about that emergency access road, who's gonna maintain that? Who's gonna plow it? Do we know?
I think you're a little ahead of the game in terms of-
Well, I'm just-
Can you finish? Hold on, he's just having a discussion about where to go, and his proposal is to come back with the details to answer questions like that. I think rather than us conjecture about what those details are gonna be, we should give-
All right, so, so we don't know who's gonna maintain-
Can I finish? To give him a chance to come back with those.
That's fine, fine.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening.
Thanks, Tim.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing for special permit for lots C, map 105, lot C1, C2, C3, 1,002A, Zero Charlotte Furnace Road. So, I'd look for a motion to open a public hearing. Motion to open a public hearing.
Second.
Any discretion?
That's his problem.
They can't find a way around the course, they, with the GPS, they're gonna play in golf.
All right, then. Wayham Planning Board will hold a public hearing on January 13th, 2020, 7:00 PM, Room 320, Ware Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wayham, to consider petition 35-19 for a special permit from the requirements of Article 8, Residential Cluster Subdevelopment and Subdivision Control Law and the Wayham Subdivision Rules and Regulations to Sarah John Realty LLC, care of J.C. Engineering, 2854 Kernberry Highway, East Wayham, proposing 10 cluster development lots within open space parcel. Assesses map 105, lot C1, C2, C3, 1,002A, located at Zero Charlotte Furnace Road, West Wayham.
Good evening, for the record, John Churchill, J.C. Engineering, representing the applicant. What you have, those three sheets that you have in front of you, what we're requesting is a special permit slash, um, cluster, cluster development, essentially. All these lots are fronting on Charlotte Furnace Road. If you go to sheet number three, what you'll see-
You don't have the special permit application.
As required by the special permit cluster regulations, you're required to lay out the, um, concept plan, essentially, basically to establish the lotting count. Sheet number three. See, there's a, a road, 40-foot wide road that tees down with two cul-de-sacs either way, establishing 10 lots at 60,000 square feet for each, each of those lots. So, under the cluster bylaw, if you give 50% of open space, then you can still get your 10 lots and give open space, basically. In lieu of that, so on sheet number one, what you'll see is, you'll see the minimum requirement, which is 30,000 square foot lots, in an open space parcel of 8.66 acres. That will be maintained forever in its, in its natural state. So, essentially, what the cluster bylaw allows you to do is to centralize the development to smaller lots while you're leaving the, the vast parcel, essentially untouched, under the special permit criteria. And each of these lot owners would have a, um, an interest in, in that, in that, in that land, basically for maintenance and whatever needs to be, taxes of such for that open space parcel. And all those lots, again, front on Charlotte Furnace Road. So, it essentially allows you to come in with a lesser density-
Yes.
And establish, you're not getting any more lots than you could buy right. You're basically just creating the open space.
You're going so fast.
Okay.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
My first thought is, are you modifying this very nice-looking design-
Sheet three.
-to, to sheet one strictly for monetary purposes?
And, and not to create, and you don't have to create the road, correct? You don't have to build the roadway. So, essentially, the cluster, but the lots are now, instead of 60,000 square feet lots, you have 30,000. On sheet one, you'll see the 30,000 square foot lots. So, essentially, you have lesser acreage on each individual lot to allow for the 8.8, 8.6 acres of an open space parcel.
With every single house, I mean, it's like a row houses.
Basically, yeah. Basically, you have, basically, you have now is you have the, you could buy right, as you see on the other plan, get the 10 lots, but you have to put the roadway, infrastructure, private roads. You're creating pavement, you're, 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 you know, taking the parcel, basically, and, and putting roadways through it, drainage, so that the, the trade-off is to have lesser square-footage lots with the, lesser square-footage lots in lieu of, of the roadway. We are extending the water line, though, due to the fact of the special permit. There was a comment by the fire department to extend, extend the water line on Charlotte Furnace Road and put hydrants for this, for this project. So, that is part of the project on sheet number two. It's about 1,300 feet and three additional hydrants along Charlotte Furnace. So, the benefit, again, to the town of that is developers gonna be paying to extend the water line down Charlotte Furnace Road, too. So, that's the benefit to the town, so.
What's the purpose of parcel 12?
Parcel 12, is, there's a parcel out back there, beyond the property, to the east. That's the solar field, it's an approved project that's already currently done, basically, it's already constructed. That is to, in the future, provide access to parcel, to that parcel out back. In the future, to, to currently provide access to that parcel, if need be. It's future access, basically.
The site plan on page three is a much more attractive site, a much more, I shouldn't say attractive, desirable site plan.
Be a conventional subdivision? The conventional subdivision, you're looking at about 1,000 feet of roadway. And, and the gain to that is you're getting four lots, essentially. So, that's the trade-off.
I'm sorry, what's the-
You would gain four lots by that T configuration. To put 1,000 feet of roadway, you're, you're only gaining those four lots out back. Because remember, by right, lots one through six, you can do by right under an A and R, approval not required. So, by right, you can build lots one through six, not extend the water line down Charlotte Furnace Road. And then, in the future, they could decide to come in and, and put a roadway in and, and do that T-type configuration with the 60,000 square foot lots. And you'd have no open space, and you'd have no more, you'd have no water main.
I, I, I could imagine that your cluster plan could be achieved, it's very difficult to do this orally, but you can achieve the open space and the smaller lots within the requirements of the cluster zoning and end up with a, a more desirable footprint. Was this, I'm sorry, was this done by a site, a landscape architect or architect, or just strictly civil engineering input?
It's just civil engineering. It's just to establish, the bylaw basically states, show a, a potential house and a potential septic on the property. That's the requirement in the, in the cluster bylaw, just to give you an idea of what a house would look like on the property.
Have we done this anywhere else in town, John?
Have I done this? I've done cluster, Pine Grove, Pine Grove was a cluster. It was about 100 acre site where 18 lots and 58 acres was open space. So, that was three separate roadways that were, that were built, paper roads that were converted to roadways. I think one, one road had 10 lots, one road had eight lots, and the other road had two lots. But it significantly reduced the amount of roadway required. So, again, you established the lotting count by saying, you know, in that zone, it's 130,000 square feet, for instance. So, you had, you established you can get 18 lots if you laid out this networking of roadways, and then you used the cluster bylaw to, to still get your 18 lots, but you, you give back the, you know, acreage and open space, essentially. So, you're not, you're not altering so much land area. And that's the purpose of this, too.
Is there a tax benefit to the homeowner?
Would there be a tax benefit to the homeowner to have the open space?
Yeah. Tax differently on the open space?
It wouldn't be, well, yes, the, the open space would be taxed, it would be on the taxpayer, it would be on the roll of these property owners. So, these, these property owners would be responsible for 1/10th, this 10 lots, they'd be 1/10th responsible for that tax bill, in addition to their own taxes. That'd be a separate parcel that would be taxed.
That would be taxed through the HOA law, right? Not, not to the individual homeowner?
Each property owner would be a 1/10th owner of the HOA. They, they are the association.
Right.
They would be the association. And they would, so they would have, their fees would cover that, that tax bill.
What would preclude you from taking the, half the lots and turning them 90 degrees on the parcel and having your access road run up the middle, minimizing the impact on Charlotte Furnace?
Let me get that again, which one, the access road?
If you took, if you took lots six through, um, six through 10, and took those lots and turned them 90 degrees on the right side border, and then took lots one through five and turned them 90 degrees on the left side border, and had your, your access road for the properties run right up the middle, now you're not looking at 10 houses facing Charlotte Furnace Road. All you're looking at is one new road that comes off of Charlotte Furnace up into the property and services the houses.
Right, and you're creating a roadway. Now, we'd be, we'd be in front of you for a subdivision of the road. So, we would have to do drainage, roadway, road line, build a road, basically.
So, so this design is based on cost, nothing more? It's, 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 has no, no concerns whatsoever for the, the aesthetics of the road? It's what we can get onto that road for the least amount of money?
Basically, yeah. Basically, what you do is you take the parcel, you look at it, and say, "What can I get on the parcel? What, what by right can we do?" And this is a by right-
Can we show, would you come here a second?
Sure, yeah. I mean, the other board members really can't see, but, I mean, maybe I can answer your question.
No, no, I want to show you. Words are useless. You can't do it orally, gotta show you on a, on a page.
Okay, is that okay, Mr. Chairman, too?
May I?
Just a question, do you know what the subdivision that you go through to get to this, do you know what the lot size is out there?
On what, on which one was that?
On the, on Westfield subdivision. Do you have any idea what the lot size is out there?
Across the road, you mean, the, the-
Existing subdivision that you go by to get to this site.
I could definitely look it up in my surveying information. I'll get that for you.
George, they, originally, they were a minimum 10,000 square feet. I'm not sure whether they got combined later on, but originally, they were 10,000 square foot lots in that area. That's what the zoning was.
While you're looking through there, what's the opportunity for shared driveway access between the lots, so there are fewer driveway cuts onto Charlotte Furnace?
Shared driveway, you mean, like something?
Yeah, every, every other, pair the lots up so that they all have shared driveway.
Or buddy driveways?
Oh, it's like a hammerhead off of each one, so you come up one shared driveway and then-
So you come one shared driveway and then hocking off to the side?
Well, it's just the curb cut. Some of them have curb cuts, instead of ten curb cuts, five.
Forgive me, why is that an advantage?
It reduces the number of curb cuts and the?
So what?
Traffic backing out onto the road.
There's still the same number, the traffic's the same, it's just where they're coming out. I mean, I'm not arguing with you, I'm just trying to understand, why is five curb cuts better than ten curb cuts?
Ten curb cuts is, there's a greater chance of an interaction, an inappropriate interaction along the road. Fewer curb cuts make it look less dense as well.
There are twice as many opportunities for the neighbors to bang into each other on the driveway.
Yeah, I think they probably?
You're just moving the accident from the street to the driveway.
They're going a lot slower in the driveway than they are in the street.
Okay, so the dents aren't as deep, right?
This is on a straightaway, and if you look at this area, you can see that, you know, when these residents are pulling out of their driveway, you do have great sight lines, as you can see from just by the layout plan. I do agree a little bit there, Mr. Swenson, that sometimes when you have that shared access, now you have easements, now you have, you know, who's plowing it, who's responsible for the pavement. If that's a condition of the approval, and that's what I have to bring back to the client, then so be it, you know, do they prefer that? Probably not, just because of the additional layers that you're putting on to a site where now property owners have to share essentially a driveway. Which, as you know, if you're sharing a driveway with somebody, there's? What's that?
Especially the way Mr. Swenson drives.
I mean, a condition maybe of driveways adjoining each other, if you will, you know what I mean? Like a twenty foot driveway, say, along the property line? Something like that as a condition, I could definitely see reasonable. Whereas, you know, you can kind of say the property line's right down the center of the driveway. You can kind of, there's no easement required if you do that, you know? And you follow along with the condition of the approval. Would have to be something like that. So yeah, that's something to that effect, I guess. Maybe a shared driveway in the sense of a twelve foot curb cut, twelve foot opening, maybe a twenty foot opening. So each resident has ten feet to get in either side of the property line, whether they realize it or not, you know? Something to that effect could be definitely looked at, you know?
Have you done test pits of perk of this cluster development on this ground?
We've done test pits right adjacent to the property, put it that way, I guess. Maybe, you know, a few hundred feet away. It's all sand, just as Westfield, it's all, it's sand out there. And the soil's map is sand as well.
Very, very sand.
The Board of Health submitted comments, they said regarding the plan, the Board of Health would require that all subsurface sewage disposal plans be designed in accordance with the State Environmental Code and local Wareham Board of Health regulations. They don't suggest that there's a significant issue with it otherwise.
Here's your open space. It makes a more interesting site, and I'm sure it can work now. Yes, you have to.
We also have comments from the Water Department.
Do you have an idea what the proposed size of the house and the market values are?
I don't have that, no. I don't have the proposed size of the house and market values. Those houses that we put on there are probably about eighteen hundred square foot houses with a, basically, it was a colonial and a ranch that we have seen. So about eighteen hundred square feet with a two car garage is what you see there.
Does that have a different characteristic than the original plan?
The original plan of?
If you backed to develop the streets and solar sets?
It'd probably be the same, to be honest with you. I mean, there's no, in my opinion, and again, I'm not a real estate professional, but, you know, whether it's a thirty thousand square foot lot or sixty thousand square foot lot, the sixty thousand square foot lot gives you a little bit more room. But you typically, especially in Wareham, you're, it doesn't add a ton of value going from a thirty thousand square foot lot to a sixty thousand square foot lot that I've seen, anyways. But.
Excuse me, do we have the plan put up on the easel? It'd be nice to be able to see what everybody's talking about.
Do you have a?
I would like to ask you what your reaction is to the concept I showed you.
Oh, yeah, so Emmanuel was suggesting basically a, basically a, like a horseshoe, essentially, with four lots off to the left, two lots in the center, upper east, if you will, and four lots off to the right, if you will. And then the inside of that horseshoe to be left unbuilt upon with, next to those two lots up above, if you will, to be open space as well. The open space is supposed to be contiguous, actually, so I don't know how that would work according to your bylaw. So basically, you would have the lots on the outside of your horseshoe and then the eight acres on the inside of the horseshoe so that you have basically a roadway off the, basically, you're doing a roadway off of Charlotte Furnace. And you have, you're still leaving all those trees and such. But, I mean, one thing I could say, you know, other than curb cuts is, you know, I think what you may be losing perspective, essentially, is the scale of this plan. It is a sixty scale plan. So when we?
I'm sorry, to what?
It's a sixty scale, one inch equals sixty feet. So these houses are about a hundred feet back off the road. So these were meant to be laid out with trees. It's not being cleared, it's not gonna look like across the street with the ten thousand square foot lots, which you see every single house next to each other. These are, you know, a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and twenty foot wide lots. But there's about a hundred, you know, to the house, it's a hundred feet off the road. So when you're driving down Charlotte Furnace Road, these aren't right on top of you. They're not going to be on top of you. And the board can put a condition of such to leave a fifty foot, other than the driveway, leave a fifty foot buffer. So if you get, you're gonna get exactly what you're looking for, which is, these houses aren't right up on you. So at least you have woods, and you have a house, and then these people have the privacy off the road, too. So that's perfectly reasonable condition, if that's the concern.
That would make this more appetizing, to be honest.
Absolutely, you know, you can condition the special permit any which way you want. Essentially, like I said, by right, they could build six houses under an A and R process in front of this board. They wouldn't have to extend the water line. And they would build six houses and leave an access to build four houses in the future with a roadway. That's what the by right is. What we're asking for is ten lots off the existing road, extending a water line thirteen hundred feet and leaving eight point six acres as open space perpetuity. So, and that's the trade off, essentially. And conditioning that can be as such, driveways to be adjoining along the property line, you know, hundred foot or, you know, whatever, sixty foot, whatever the board feels reasonable, of an undisturbed buffer along the front of the property, except for utility access and driveway access. And that could be, you know, that's reasonable, that's a reasonable, there's plenty of room. These lots are two hundred and sixty-five feet deep. So these, you're not leaving these property owners with, and then behind that, they have the open space, which they're gonna be a tenth owner of that property as well. So they're not lacking wilderness behind the property. And it's not gonna be right up in your face, essentially, with Charlotte Furnace. That's not our intention either. We laid the site plan out with a, as a, you know, just as a conceptual, what you see here. You know what I mean? Because the criteria is to just show what we could build, you know? Not saying we're going to exactly build what you see there.
This open space, so the maintenance of the open space becomes the collective energy of those ten property owners. So a homeowners association has to be established?
In my opinion, that'd be the best way to do it. One of the ways to do it is to deed each property owner one tenth share of that parcel. Or you create a homeowners association, establish that basically that they have to fund. Because it's not your typical homeowners association where they're responsible for the roadways, they wouldn't be responsible for lighting, they're not responsible. They're responsible for paying the taxes on that parcel and just making sure that people aren't vandalizing or someone, one of your other neighbors aren't clearing into the parcel. Because it's meant to be maintained as forever, in perpetuity, as is.
They could let it grow wild if they wanted, right?
They're supposed to let it grow wild. They're not allowed to touch it. They're not allowed to clear it. It's left, it's supposed to be left undisturbed, and you'll see that on the sheet.
What is beyond the open space?
Beyond the open space is, to the east, there's actually a solar field.
So, you know, I don't know what makes people do what they do, but somebody decides to go out on a Sunday afternoon with a chainsaw and cut this down, but you got nine neighbors against one back here. To be this, I'd rather take my eight year half and call my own. This is becoming a homeowners circumstance here. And I'm trying to recall the circumstance. I'm trying to recall the circumstance with the fellow trying to use money back to this, nobody responded to the homeowners association.
Was it Peishman?
Yeah, I put the mic in front of you, Mark. Turn it on, does that work?
No, it's not on, okay? Oh, man, all right. So what was the circumstance with him? He couldn't, so the homeowners, it was a condition that the homeowners association get established. Everyone had to participate, pay into this thing, nobody responded to him. He finally come up and said, I'll just take it over myself and?
The problem was that he hadn't organized the homeowners association. The process of getting a homeowners association created and responsible for drainage maintenance hadn't occurred. So it was after the fact, the homeowners association was already in place and didn't have the responsibility for drainage maintenance.
Right. So when I look at this piece of property, if there's, and again, characteristic of land changes once we start building ten houses on it, we start running into some migrational water that starts adding to somebody's basement, and it's determined it's coming off of this open space. Is that a homeowners association problem now? It has to go fix this open space?
They're responsible for the land and whatever impact it has.
Okay, so one of these homeowners decide they're gonna go cut down trees?
And the other homeowners have to gang up against him.
Right, so does this become this perpetual maintenance problem for the town of Wareham where we're putting out these homeowners associations conflicts here and there?
It would be worse if we did the conventional plan, which is the sixty thousand square foot lot plan. Now you have drainage, roadways, you take, not only do you have, you'd have to create a homeowners association for that. And then you'd have the private road with who's gonna be responsible for plowing that private road, who's responsible for the drainage maintenance, and, you know, all those issues then become into play. This is just a vacant piece of land that they're responsible for. Under a regular conventional subdivision, you have a homeowners association because it's a private way. So you're developing, if we go the conventional route, we're putting a thousand linear foot roadway in with catch basins, drainage structures, and then now we're dealing with who's gonna pave that, maybe pave that, who's gonna pay for the maintenance, who's paying for the plowing of that? So you need a homeowners association for that. So it's, I guess it's, in my opinion, it's better that they're only paying the taxes on a vacant piece of land rather than trying to figure out amongst themselves who's paying for the maintenance on a roadway.
Do you need a homeowners association for that, once the street's been accepted by the town?
Such open land can either be conveyed to the town and accepted by a park or open space. It will be conveyed to a nonprofit organization, the principal purpose of which is open space conservation. Or to be conveyed to a corporation or trust owned by the owners of the lots of the residential units. Open land may be used for recreational purposes, including golf courses, riding trails, tennis courts, gardens, swimming pools, natural buffers, utilities, and other non-structural facilities for the convenience and enjoyment of the residents.
I didn't know that, can be used for a golf course? I apologize, I misspoke, you know? We're gonna put a putt putt in.
What section are you reading from there, George?
Eight seventeen, oh, three.
That's changed since the last time I read that.
How many acres total is this?
Eight point six acres.
And eight eighteen.
Maybe a golf course.
Yeah, it'd be a small golf course. But again, the intention is not to, it's to leave it undisturbed.
Not just the open space, but the parcel in total?
About seventeen acres? Have to do the math. It's approximately, because the open space is fifty-one point six percent of the actual area. Seven hundred and thirty thousand square feet is the entire parcel. Seven hundred and thirty thousand. I mean, this can be a good project. You're getting twelve, thirteen hundred feet of water line. You're getting eight point acres, eight point six acres. You can condition the project because it's in front of you under a special permit. And, you know, we talked about some of the potential conditions on the project. You know, it's better than putting a road in. It's better than putting another thousand feet of road just to create four additional lots, basically. That's essentially what you'd be doing?
Each application for residential cluster development must include a description and plan of the open space will be maintained in perpetuity.
That would take the curse off.
And the applicant shall provide a grievous satisfactory to town council that if the town is required to perform any maintenance work, the owners of the residences? Is that addressed in here, costs or?
It's addressed, yeah. We say homeowners association is what we propose. That's in there. Create a homeowners association, and each property would be deeded and required to pay into the homeowners association, essentially just to pay the taxes on it.
So, help me here, just educate me. One of the options is to deed the open space over to the town. Is there a disadvantage from your perspective? For your, from your perspective or the owner's perspective to do it that way? Why did you choose to have a homeowners association as opposed to getting rid of it?
Like an entity like the town or Audubon or Conservation Commission? You need them to accept it. I can't put words in their mouth, so it's another process, if you will. In this process, then the attorney creates a homeowners association, requires each property owner to be part of that association. And when they purchase the property, they're required to be part of that association. They're made aware of it. You tell them about a hundred dollars a year for that fee. If not, I would have to say that we would have to petition the town and hope the town would take, if we committed to you, you know, then we would have to petition the town and hope the townspeople say, yes, we want to take that parcel.
Could there be a requirement for a homeowners association if the land was not part, was deeded over to another entity?
Would you know need at that point?
Excuse me?
There'd be no need for an HOA at that point if you deeded that prop, the open space to the town.
If the open space was given to the Wareham Land Trust or the town, or whatever, anything but a?
Yeah, but you just can't give it. They have to actually accept it.
The town site would be, it would then be open to the public, which your bias may object to.
But Mike, where I'm going is, would, if we did that, if we found someone to accept it, would you need a HOA at that point?
You would not, because you would have a legal owner of that property. You would have, you would have, you know, right now, the legal owner, you know what I mean, is maybe. So they own it right now, and?
The reason I ask is personally, HOAs are trouble.
Trouble is not, that's an understatement.
And so if they can be avoided, we should avoid them.
I agree.
Again, I don't think we want the town, this is eight acres of land. Is this useful to us, eight acres?
There's other options, too.
Yeah, so I do have one comment, though. I guess this is just me, just describing, you know, me as a homeowner. That cluster makes it much more dense. I'm estimating, if you're building a colonial on there, the length of the colonial to be sixty feet. Some of these are one fifteen, this one's eighty-two, one eighteen. So you basically have thirty feet on each side of that house?
Pretty much, yes.
To the lot line?
Yep, sixty feet.
Sixty feet apart from wall to wall. That density looks very different than if they were on a much larger plot of land in which these houses could be spread out. And then the introduction onto Charlotte Furnace is just one entrance road on there. So I think a lot of this goes back to what is, you know, how do we want the town to develop? We want to look at ten houses in a row? Yes, I understand. In my mind, I think of the houses on Hathaway, those driveways are probably a hundred feet in. feet in, dense trees on the front there, you know, just something common we can all get a visual of. So I like that. But these houses are relatively close to each other. I, I think on a sixty thousand square foot lot, are you, you know, now, now a hundred feet apart from each other, a hundred and twenty feet apart from each other? The density looks different. I think on a larger lot, you could change the characteristic of the home. Eighteen hundred square foot, um, you know, desired square footage for somebody coming to Wareham, probably average, right?
That's about where, that's about where I've been seeing it at. And the, the reason for a cluster subdivision is the preservation of the open space and trees. So it, if you did a conventional plan, if I was to lay out a conventional plan for you and show an eighteen hundred square foot house in each of those lots, you're cutting down more trees and you're doing more impact, uh, with, with a conventional plan than you are under this cluster plan.
Because of the driveway?
Because, not just the driveway, but a thousand feet of roadway, drainage roadway, drainage basins, infiltration basins, potentially, you know what I mean? You're, you're creating, um, a lot more disturbance. And you don't, you don't have eight point six acres of preserved, um, of preserved open space. So that's why, that's why we have the density. So yes, you're right, their density is, um, much greater on a, on a cluster plan. That's the purpose, to, to centralize the open, the eight point six acres of, of undisturbed land. Whereas under a conventional plan, there is zero undisturbed land. Each property owner can clear cut their property, um, all sixty thousand square feet of it, all ten property owners can. And you have, you know, we lost eight point six acres of, of open, open space. One option under the, instead of an HOA, an option is to condition it so that each property owner would get one tenth, um, a deed essentially.
What does that accomplish?
What that does is then you don't have the HOA, because really, you don't have, the only, the only reason for the HOA is to, so you have somebody that owns, the assessors' office has somebody that bill. That's really the only reason for this open space parcel, essentially. And to, whether these ten property owners want to be involved with it, but, um, one option that I could commit to is the fact that each property owner would be a tenth owner. So essentially what you're doing is, it, it's complicated, it's a much more complicated situation than creating just one entity and each person sharing in those ten, being a tenth, you know what I mean, and part of that. Um, you can create a, an instrument, essentially, where you're deeding, you know, when you deed their property, you're also deeding them a tenth interest in that parcel. And so that's, so they actually own that, a tenth of that parcel.
Uh, one more clarification question, is that right? I didn't want to interrupt. This, this lot line right here?
Correct.
Um, right now, this is all trees, right? Is, is, is that lot line right where the tree, the tree line stops and the solar farm begins? I'm looking at an overhead of the...
On the view.
You know what I mean?
So under, so what you're saying is, where is the disturbance, essentially? Up from the solar field, up to the property line?
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering.
Not a hundred percent sure on that.
Because where I'm going with this is, is that I hearken back to our, uh, the residents who hear from West Wareham that were talking to us about the, the solar farms that were going in, and they could see them from their, from their bedroom windows. Squirrel Island Road? Pardon me? Squirrel Island? Yes, thank you. Squirrel Island Road. Under the current sixty thousand square foot, um, layout, those people in the back are looking right at the solar farms.
Absolutely, with only probably a forty foot buffer. I mean, I think that, whatever the regulation is, I'm sure they max, I mean, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but they probably maximized, you know, whatever the buffer requirement would be of, of...
They're, they're right there with, with the cluster.
They're close, I can tell you they're very close. Whether it's forty feet or a hundred feet, I, I don't know. But I know the solar field and, and the disturbance is right beyond that property line.
If you can see, this is the property line, the edge of the trees. And so those, those houses in the back are gonna be butting those solar farms, so that's becoming very appealing to me, uh, looking at, seeing this huge wooded buffer, um, with the cluster, uh, taking advantage of the clusters on the wall.
I think if we conditioned it so that there was undisturbed property from Charlotte Furnace Road inbound, X number of feet, so that you weren't just driving by ten houses one right after the other with their lawns right out against Charlotte Furnace.
The only issue I have with saying undisturbed is you have the true forest there. When you start clearing around it, group of construction and...
The trees start to fail.
You change the whole dynamics, you're gonna start going down.
You can put a condition in, though, you know, if you put a fifty foot or a sixty foot buffer, you may lose some trees, but it's that, that, that far, that comes back, that, that stuff, you know, just enough to put utilities and, you know, you can put that as a restriction, and we can put that on everybody's deed, you know, that it's a restriction, you know what I mean? That basically, if, put it in the site plan approval, and then that gets transferred to everybody, to the property. So do a fifty foot or a sixty foot undisturbed, only for utilities and driveway access only, um, and it gets put into everybody's deed, that, that, that's what it is. I mean, that's, they're on notice.
What you proposed here is pretty much cookie cutter. Is there any ability to, for potential buyers to move their house forward back off the side?
You, you see the, the, um, the dashed box in there? They can put their house any, anywhere within that box. So you, they could put this house all the way back, as you see, I mean, that's, so they're, they're, the front, if you look at those blue, which are the septic systems, essentially. So basically, half the septic system is that front setback, and then, so these houses are about a hundred feet back. So that's a sixty foot front setback right there. So you would be able to, and that's what I was saying about the scale of the plan, it's a little deceiving, uh, 'cause that's, that plan is showing at one inch equals sixty, so, um, just to get it on one sheet. But this is a large parcel. I mean, this is not a, this is not by any means a, a small parcel. It's, that's seventeen acres right there within that, that rectangle.
So you could stagger the...
The, the houses? Oh, yeah, no, definitely. I mean, you want to, you know, make some variation on, on these houses, but, um, I think what's more important to the board again is to make sure you provide a fifty or sixty foot undisturbed buffer, so you, so it looks like, um, it doesn't look across the street. These lots are three times the size of the ones across the street.
Well, and they're, they're gonna give the, the new homeowners some privacy, which is what a lot of people are designing nowadays.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, from a constructability standpoint, it makes sense to provide that buffer, but the board to, to, you know, it'd be, you know, the developer would be, you know, it wouldn't be smart to, knowing you have a two hundred and sixty foot lot and clear cut rate in the front, put it right out front, you know? I've seen guys do that. But with a condition, then it doesn't, you know, it, it precludes them from doing that, and it makes for a better, it makes for a better layout, you know?
To Richard's point, from his own personal experience, I would, I would avoid an HOA at all costs. There's no good that comes from that.
Who, who owns the solar farms?
I don't know. The solar farm?
The solar farms, I mean.
It's makepeace on the farm.
Parego is the one that built that solar farm.
I don't know if they leased it or not.
Don't know.
I don't know. I, I have the legal owner as eighty makepeace, Maple Springs, too, on that parcel.
Hey, can they, can they add on to it anymore than what's there?
Not without coming back before the board, you know?
Yeah.
That's it, they're not gonna come back to say this was a phase two, there was a approved five years ago, like they...
Not without a change to the special permit that they have.
I think, again, I, I kinda, now, now I'm looking at the solar farm in relevance to this land here, and I think the correct decision would be to create that buffer. Otherwise, we got this whole squirrel island...
Situation.
...deal again. Because I, because now looking at that solar farm compared to these back lots, um, with the cul-de-sacs, I don't see any way around this, that you wouldn't be looking at some portion of those.
I agree.
As it is right now with the grade change, what, what are you, about seventy-eight feet elevation?
There's very minimal grade changes out there. It's like four feet, out in the back, it's eighty-four, and up by the roads, eighty. Seventy-six over there, oh, that's six feet to back, I see what you're saying. We're, we're higher than the solar field, if that's what you're saying. Yeah. So you would be looking over into the solar field.
How would you address, uh, thirty percent of the open land suitable for passive and active recreation?
Passive and active, that's, they own it. I mean, these property owners can walk and, I mean, passive and active means they can walk it, it's available.
It says shall be suitable, so...
Shall be, it's all up, it's all suitable. It's all suitable. It's gonna be tough to walk sometimes in there, but...
Could I offer an alternative to what we've been talking about? Because, um, when I read the residential cluster development, all I can think of is I understand where John's coming from, and if I, if I was in his position, I might think at it the same way. On the other hand, I think there are other alternatives to doing something which simply strings the lots out as if they were created twenty-five years ago. I did a, just a basic sketch plan, just to see what I could do, and I came out with ten, twenty-five thousand square foot lots, two road cuts onto Charlotte Furnace Road, and each road cut had five lots, so that they could all enter onto that road and come out at one place. I think that does two things. First of all, I believe that, um, in doing something like that, it's more in keeping with the requirement of the bylaw that says that the cluster development must be a better development than the standard one that you could create. I forget what section that is, but it's in the bylaw. It says it must be a better, um, I'm sorry, I gotta read the language.
Yeah, we need to read that one.
Is superior to a conventional plan in preserving open space, minimizing environmental disruption, allowing for more efficient provisions of services. So I did a cluster development in two sections, one of which, each of which has a three hundred foot long roadway. Twenty-five thousand square foot lots clustered in two little groups, one of which could be built first, and then the other one built second. They're independent of each other. That does two things. It reduces the amount of curb cuts on Charlotte Furnace Road. That road is well-traveled between Carver and Wareham. And to reduce the number of curb cuts, it seems to me makes sense, but it also, I think, is in more keeping with the idea of a cluster where groups of lots come together. I've got the sketch, if anybody's interested in seeing it.
I'll take a look at it.
Yep, absolutely.
It's not the only one that could be done, it was just one that I did just arbitrarily.
Have you seen this, Joe?
No, I haven't seen it.
I haven't shared it with anybody.
Well, there's two issues. Do you think...
Thank you.
That the increased value of a more secluded subdivision would offset the cost of those roadways? And the other thing is, one of the, one of the thoughts behind cluster development was to use existing roadways and not create more roadway surface and more maintenance for the town.
Right, yeah, these, these would be two subdivision roads, so, I mean, you'd be looking at three hundred foot roads, two three hundred foot roads at whatever the cost is. But like you said, now you're talking about maintenance of the roadway. I'll share that, 'cause the board hasn't seen it.
Well, that, that would fall upon the HOA, though, wouldn't it?
It would fall, yeah, absolutely.
No, not necessarily. Uh, when, when you deed a lot out, you would be deeding, um, part of the road to that individual, so that they would be independent of anything the town would have to do, but, um, as a group and individuals, they would be responsible for their own maintenance. It doesn't necessarily mean that they have to have a homeowners' association to do that. They would own a portion of the road if it isn't exclusively retained by the developer at the time that he conveys the property over. The other thing you could do there would be, because there's only five lots, you don't have to have a twenty-four foot road. You can reduce that pavement down, so it's something much less than that. I think your own standards gets you down to eighteen feet, so you're reducing the cost of paving.
Right, but if you look at that plan, too, you see those four lots right on, they literally have no restrictions. They can clear right to Charlotte, right to Charlotte Furnace Road. Those four ain't basically lots sitting there.
Well, don't forget this is special permit, so you could, restrictions on what, what clearing could be done.
Right.
But you could also put a restriction on there that their access must be off of that individual road and not an independent driveway off of Charlotte Furnace. It's just a, just a thought, because when I first got the information, um, the only thing I got was lot one. So I went through the exercise, the same as John did, to figure out if he could get ten lots, and there's no question about what he can. But the cluster development allows you to reduce your frontage, especially on a cul-de-sac. You can reduce it down to twenty, uh, seventy-five feet, splay it out, get the area that you need. And I personally, and I'm just speaking for myself, that I think it's more in keeping with the idea of what a cluster is meant to be, rather than to be strung out, um, just in a straight line, that's all.
Charlie, I, I agree with you a hundred percent. That's what, the, the little plan that I showed John, what threw me off, I didn't know that the solar field was there.
I agree that the solar fields are back there, and it, you know, it's, uh, it's a detriment to anybody that wants to develop in there. Unfortunately, that's, that's the case.
And as it happens to be, the, the people that develop the solar field are one and the same, so...
Yeah.
Hence creating the problem that they're beyond feeling with.
It's not to, not to say that, um, those two lots that are back closest to it couldn't add additional screening and do appropriate measures to keep themselves from having to see it.
Well, it's, it's one thing to buy a piece of property or a solar field, it's another thing to have a piece of property and have a solar field.
Yeah.
This old field is near first, if you're a property owner, buy it. It's a quiet neighborhood.
Just to remind the board, too, I mean, we're, we're not looking to create a roadway. We're trying to stay away from creating roadways, 'cause roadways are, you know, as DPW put it, they're not plowing roadways, they're not plowing private roadways. They've, they've literally just came to me, I'm, I'm dealing with another project, and they're refusing to plow their roadways, um, until they go to the town, petition the town, for the town to take that road as a, as a public way. So whether the town's gonna take that as a public way is still to be determined. So this winter right now, they're not getting their roadway plowed. So I'm creating two roadways that the town may or may not take, and that these property owners have to pay for a private plower, essentially. Uh, when we have a proposal in front of you, we're not creating any new roadways. Uh, we can condition it properly, uh, so that you have your buffer. You know, I, I could go one step further and, and do what I've seen other projects do, is a sheer driveway coming in, and then an intermediate point, and keep on going. But again, you're back to that, who's gonna plow it, who's gonna, you know, your neighbors across your property, essentially. I've seen them do that on a couple plans here. I know Ferring Hill, they did one, uh, to keep the traffic off the main road. Um, how mu, how well did that work? I mean, how many times do you really pull out of your driveway in a day? You know, four, five times a day? I mean, realistically, it's a straightaway, perfect sightlines. I don't see an issue with traffic. I don't see, I don't see that, those issues, uh, in this vicinity. There's no huge S-curs, uh, there's no, uh, concerns. Yes, Charlotte Furnace has traveled, you know, heavily, uh, but someone pulling out of their driveway, um, has a hundred foot long driveway. They're not backing out of the driveway like the people across the street that are only forty feet off the edge, thirty feet off the edge of the road. These, these property owners are, are pulling straight out onto Charlotte Furnace Road, so. And we're not, you know, we're not looking to create roadways. That's basically, um, the water department's requiring hydrants, uh, fire department's requiring hydrants within five hundred feet, uh, because it's a site plan approval, uh, they have an, they have a say in it. Uh, so if we do two roadways, we're putting, putting water main down each of those roadways. We're putting hydrants down each of those roadways. Not only are we extending a hydrant now down along Charlotte Furnace to thirteen hundred feet, now you're putting, you know, another six, eight hundred feet of roadway connection of hydrants and, and water main now, uh, into that, into that roadway. So, um, the purpose of the cluster is to make it more, to make the developer be able to, uh, reduce his costs while giving back open space, uh, back to the, you know, backs of the town, so that's kind of the, the trade-off, if you will. So, I mean, you can put, um, six lots along Charlotte Furnace Road with no water main and a plan by right and build six homes. And, and you, they can build, you know, no conditions at all. So this gives the board an opportunity to condition ten lots along Charlotte Furnace Road, a thirteen hundred foot water main, three additional hydrants, um, and then, or developer could come back, or probably will come back with six, eight in their lots. And then, um, if, in the future, if they wanted to develop those four lots by putting a roadway in, then they could, if they want to spend that money to do that. So those are the two options, I see. I mean, the roadway cost is, what's the cost of a roadway? I mean, I don't know, Charlie, two hundred, three hundred bucks for probably a foot, so you're probably looking at two hundred thousand dollars plus water main, three hundred thousand dollars just to put two cul-de-sacs in, you know?[1771.11] Where in Wayham? I don't think, you know, a lot doesn't, you know, what's a lot go for in Wayham?
Why not just put in six lots and avoid all the cost?
It could.
You wouldn't have to put the water main in at all. There would be no cost to you. Just sell the lots and let somebody do whatever they want.
Mm-hmm. That's an option. But then you don't have the open space.
Well, I can't imagine anybody's...
You don't have the water line.
I can't imagine anybody's going to clear three acres of land just for the sake of clearing it. People today are building smaller houses anyway.
Mm-hmm.
You know, building houses like they were 20 years ago.
Yeah, but I mean, five, eight years, then you're going to have a four-lot subdivision in front of you. And you lost the 8.6 acres of open space, you know, as time progresses.
Well, that's a, isn't that an argument for another day? Who's going to build that amount of roadway and that amount of water main for four lots?
You wouldn't have, we're not going to extend the water line if we go the six-lot A&amp;R route, the access.
But under a subdivision, you probably would, if you go back to the rules and regulations. If you're within 1,500 feet, you're supposed to.
Correct.
So who's going to do that? For the case of four additional lots, I would think that would make any sense.
I'm just saying, you know, it's up to the board. I mean, it's...
I mean, would a cluster development require something like...
No, it does not. I've looked through the regs. That's why we call it an A&amp;R cluster.
Not A&amp;R, I mean just...
Proven required.
Even if you wanted to break it up a little bit and have them all, you could be feeding your back lots from along the driveway rather than a subdivision road.
Similar to what Manuel's suggesting potentially, is putting in, call them private roads, I guess. I mean, level's standard. Once you go down that road, you have a private drive, 200 feet long, whatever you want to do, you're going to be asking for drainage, you're going to be asking for...
Well, what I'm looking at is, I knew, we've met the bylaw, what you submitted, but I think you're missing the bonus of something that could be more marketable and still meet the requirements, so. And I understand the cost of the roadway, but if that becomes a driveway, which I think when we had a subdivision, we had a cluster before, three more. Once you're on the property, you were basically private driveways.
I don't know, Mr. Chairman. That's Solar Farms jacking everything up here. If you...
I don't really care about the solar farm.
No, I know, but you're saying something more marketable. But I think you've actually lost market appeal once you put that roadway back and you... Because you're going to be driving up that roadway looking dead-on at those solar fields.
I don't know, maybe you know. I know I walked up to it a few years ago on another project, and I don't...
Are you saying if you win with this plan here? If you win with this plan here, this road runs perpendicular to the lot line of the solar field. Is that correct or no?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, I mean, that isn't the most advantageous way to do it.
Right, but if you build roadways, I mean, you've got to remember too, and if you've developed, when you develop a roadway, even if you want to call it a private drive, N-Star requires, it's probably close to $30,000 to $50,000 just to tie in for each roadway. That's what they require. So the cost of building a roadway is, gets expensive. If even those two roadways, the connection fee for the town of Wayham is $28,000 to connect. So, you know, that's the connection fee. That's just, you know, that's the town, that's the fire district. So you're looking fees as $60,000. Once you call it a roadway, you're looking at $60,000 just in fees. Then you've got to actually do, build it. You actually have to go build the road. The big ones, N-Star, Eversource. I mean, even you call it a private way, I had a two-lot subdivision, and it's called it a private way. $35,000 was the fee just to connect to their pole out by the existing road. So that's not including building the road. So building the roadway gets expensive, and that's the reason why you see what you have before you. If you're looking at like a, an easement of some sort to get the... Which we, I think we've covered that though. I mean, I was going to say, if you want to do a private drive, you know, 25, 30 feet off the edge of Charlotte Furnace, so, you know. But I think a 60-foot-wide, undisturbed, vegetated buffer creates that, what you're looking for. I mean, you're not going to see these, you see a house from, you're going to see a house 130 feet back.
This is 200 scales, it's about 100 feet.
You're not, these aren't out on the, up right up there on you. I think you...
George, is the expectation that we're going to make a decision on a special permit tonight?
Well, I don't think we have, we don't have a prepared to establish conditions on this tonight. We have worked on this for a while, so. Are you clear? Do you have anything prepared or no?
No, I don't. I just want to say that, if I may, an approach similar to the one on Charlie's sketch, there are only two lots that we expressed concern about relative to the solar field. They are about 100, it could be done so that you're at least 100 feet from the property. Now, the field is another, what, 40 feet beyond that? There has to be screening, and good house designs could put bathrooms and closets and all of that stuff at that side of the property so that it minimizes exposure to the solar field and makes... To me, that, this is not a cluster plan, that's a cluster plan. And so I'm not sure that, you shouldn't give it some thought. It's...
I'm sorry, you're not sure what? I didn't understand.
Oh, I think he, I should put in the positive. He should, I suggest that he give it some thought. But I want to just parenthetically say something too about the process. Regrettably, I didn't bring my new version of the zoning bylaw. Had we approved the amendment or the change whereby a proponent would come before the board for an informal session, is that in the new bylaw? I don't remember it.
Not in this section. That's in the site plan review.
I thought he would apply for everything. I mean, here again, we have, someone has invested time and money on an engineering plan, and it's difficult to push back to undo. I thought that we would be having these informal reviews to hear an applicant's thoughts about their proposals for, their proposed concept for a site. This discussion could be taking place before you have engineering drawings.
Well, the idea of a public hearing is the, this discussion occurs in a public setting rather than a private setting. And the fact is that this doesn't look like the classic cluster subdivision that they show you in planning school. It doesn't come out looking that way. But he's presented his criteria, which is not to add additional infrastructure, to go with the existing access. And he's been successful in meeting the regulations in accordance with what we've already laid out in the bylaw. So the question to you is, do you find this superior to a conventional development of this, of this property?
No.
And you, and reasons why are?
Conventional development, not redesigning my cluster, conventional development. Not redesigning the cluster to the way you want the cluster to look and can condition it so that it is superior to a conventional development. That's the criteria. It's under a special permit.
The question is, is it 10, 60 square foot lots?
With a roadway.
With a roadway. Or is it 10, 30 square, 30,000 square foot lots with...
8.6 acres of open space and conditioned, and conditioned the way you want to condition it.
Yeah. That's the decision, is one is superior to the other. It's not the design.
Thank you.
In my opinion.
And you're right. And it's not, it's not to redesign my, the plan. This is what the client wants and meets the requirements. You know, we're not, everybody, you get two, three, four architects in a room and you're going to have four different opinions, you know? It's just like lawyers, but, you know...
No, no, you just have one, that's all.
We do have one, so. This is the presented plan. You know, and it meets the requirements. So, I mean, I know, I hear what you're saying.
So, I appreciate, I take that, well taken. So our role now is not to be planners in contributing to an improving of a plant's concept, but we're, we are endorsing compliance with the regulations.
No, you can add your conditions in this approval, if you did an approval of it, which specifies how you want to make those changes in it to how the ownership of the open space, how the development within those parcels that are shown here. Because nobody driving down Charlotte Furnace Road is going to see lot lines. All they're going to see is driveway cuts and potentially houses, depending on how far back they are.
Well, the other thing that I think you have to decide is, not only is it better than the as of right, is it better than what can be done and be done? It's not another mess with nowhere, with bright lights and heavy trucks.
That's conventional. And again, that is a conventional, that's what this use could be.
The difference, I think this could have generated more traffic than a commercial, most commercial operations, but such as like, you know, residential.
So I'll repeat my question. Are we, is the expectation that we're going to vote yea or nay on this permit tonight? And John, I'd ask you that question. Was that your expectation?
I think the information's in front of you is sufficient to grant with conditions. And I think I've heard a few of the conditions that I see, in addition to, I mean, it's not a subdivision where you would, you need to lay out the mass conditions, you know what I mean? I think I see some of the site plan conditions, which is an undisturbed buffer. I think extension of the water, it's shown on the plan. But extension of the water line, because that's a comment from one of the departments that you have a letter in front of you, is extension of, for the fire hydrant. You know, and basically, I think those two conditions, I mean, and if however you want to dictate, there's three options within your bylaw on what to do with the open space. So if you want to try to dictate what we do to the open space, I guess you can try to condition that. I don't know how...
There's clearly no sidewalk here, right?
No.
So I think that at a minimum, this board requires more than the hour we spent seeing this and understanding it to contemplate what conditions we may want to ask this developer to do. I think the goal that we should try to accomplish tonight is to understand exactly what the proposal is. Make sure we're familiar with the bylaws and zoning regulations that are in question here to understand the cluster zoning concept, and then come back at the next session prepared to discuss any possible conditions. John, from my perspective, it's clear you've satisfied the regulations here, so.
There are some things that have to be improved by our council, providing maintenance of the open space and the plan for maintenance and what else was said.
Do you make that a condition?
And if we establish a corporation or a trust to control the open space.
So to that end, I think that we should table this for this session and be prepared to come back with conditions at our next session.
Do you also want to do a site visit to see what the impact of the solar field is, the development of the property?
If I went to the site field, John, would I be able to figure out where the lot line was back there between this parcel and the solar fields in your, can you make a guess for me?
And you would be able to see where the solar field is, definitely.
Ding, I'm there.
Yeah, between, I think it's Master Millwork and the two, the two big commercial developments that are out there, between Master Millwork and Bayside Agricultural. If you see those two, basically stay between those on the right-hand side. Go about halfway down and walk straight back about, what, 600 feet, I think, is the depth of this property? And you'll come right to the solar field. It's 600 feet. So, yeah, so about 600 feet in, you'll be there.
I don't have a gauge that long.
It's 300 paces.
You know, I think, I think we, I have to go with the chairman here is that...
14.2?
I don't think the factor of the solar field can play into this. We can't play both sides of the fence on this thing. If this, if these solar fields, which is light manufacturing as far as I'm concerned of solar energy, is a condition that we're going to approve in this town, then the, these private landowners are victim of those approvals. But if we're going to base our decision on those solar fields that have already been approved, I think we're playing both sides of the fence here. It's like, you know, if we don't like the profile of the Master Millworks building next to it, are we going to take a ride out there to look at that? They were on that property first. The developer has to build around those conditions here. I think it's a matter of, is this meeting the spirit of a cluster development?
If I may, Mark, from the solar field perspective, I'm looking at two options. One of them has a brand-new road overlooking the solar field, and the other one has over 3, over 150 or 300 feet of wooded area isolating that solar field from residential development. I'm clearly going to take that into consideration.
What I look at, I look at this as being a subdivision. And if the roads were being built, and the reason I asked about the sidewalks is, we'd be sitting here and saying, make sure you had sidewalks on there. And make sure you build a condition that's conducive to a 10-home neighborhood in which these people can operate. You know, here, yes, the developer saves some money on asphalt. I'm not sure that, that the argument is convincing enough to say that this is for the greater good of planet Earth and preserving eight more acres of woodland. I think if I'm a business person, I look at this and say, let's see if we can play this card and we save $300,000 of development, and that ends up going to the bottom line, and we got more bang for our buck out of this piece of property. So what's actually being gained here is that an existing road is being used, potentially 10 curb cuts in here. We're using the infrastructure of an existing water line here, and we're not making any improvements to the town. And these 10 pieces of property now actually add abuse onto this roadway system as opposed to the bulk of the abuse being taken by newly-developed developers' roads. I guess all that being said, those are just my personal opinions on this thing. And I'm looking at this from a couple different dimensions. What I'm trying to express to the board right now is, it has nothing to do with this development right now. We have to look at the impact of these solar farms and the choices that it's forcing us to make on decisions like this, is that we're now making a decision based on the solar farm.
Well, solar farms is not entered in the session. Nobody's making a decision based on solar farm. I'm not certainly not.
Well, I'm not.
A solar farm is there for people to see. It's not, if they don't like a solar farm in their backyard, they don't buy out. It's not like these houses exist and somebody don't propose a solar farm in their backyard.
Well, I guess the question I have on this solar farm is...
Just like people complaining about air pollution. Air pollution is it first, you know?
No, I understand, but if we can just come back to the solar farm for a second. What do we think the buffer between the perimeter fence line of that solar farm and the property line of this piece of property is? Is there any buffer? Because when I look at this area here, I have a hard time distinguishing where does make pieces of property stop around the solar farm right now? Do you know how far that would be?
I think it's 50 feet, Mark, if I remember right, in the Burigo plans. But the bylaw requires a 50-foot buffer between the solar farm and the property boundary. Now, whether or not they were, it was left in its natural state, I'd have to go back and look at the plans, but I'm pretty sure it was.
Just to make a comment. If it's 50 feet by law and we have an opportunity to put over 300 feet of open space in perpetuity between Charlotte Furnace Road and those solar farms, to me, that is an opportunity that we need to look at long and hard and should be very, very reluctant to dismiss.
With all due respect, I'd rather put my effort into reducing the number of curb cuts on Charlotte Furnace Road.
Someone's going to have to explain to me what the advantage to that is.
I agree with the chairman, that has nothing to do with it. And the fact that you're trying to reduce the cost to a developer, in my opinion, has nothing to do with it.
Does someone explain to me why five curb cuts reduces traffic on Charlotte Furnace Road as opposed to 10?
It reduces the number of points of potential impact along Charlotte Furnace Road. It reduces it from 10 to 2 in the plan that I did.
I'm talking about volume of traffic.
Nobody's considering the volume of traffic on 10 house lots. Come on, that's silly. The number of cars that go back and forth on Charlotte Furnace Road compared to what you would get from putting 10 lots there, there's no comparison between the two. What I'm talking about is reducing the number of points where somebody would come out onto Charlotte Furnace Road and meet somebody coming along Charlotte Furnace Road from a driveway. If you reduce that from 10 to 5, to 10 to 2, to me, that makes a heck of a lot of sense from a safety point of view and...
However, though, Charlie, let's say we go from 10 to 2.
Yeah.
On those 2, the amount of traffic coming out of those 2 will be... On those 2, the amount of traffic coming out of those 2 will be 5 times as much.
For a dead-end, for a dead-end street for 5 lots, what is the traffic for a dead-end street with 5 lots? It's nothing.
But, but you're arguing with yourself here.
No, I'm not.
Well, hear me out now.
Okay.
If we're worried about traffic coming onto Charlotte Furnace Road, regardless of the number of curb cuts, regardless of the number of streets, regardless of, of, I'll just leave it at that, if there's 10 homes there, they generate X amount of traffic, and that X amount of traffic is going to have X amount of cars coming on to Charlotte Furnace Road, regardless of if they're doing it here, here, and here, or they're doing it 10 different spots.
You don't think that having them exit in 2 spots rather than 10 is just as good or just as safe?
In one case, they're backing into Charlotte, into the road, in the other case, they're driving and looking.
Not even backing in, though, just the number of decision points along the way.
That's right.
The more decision points you have, the more difficult it is.
The number of decision points is based on the traffic volume.
No, it's not. It's based on the number of curb cuts that are along there, and potential for the traffic on it.
But when you look at the area versus town.
All right. I agree with you, I agree with you, Richard, because basically if that road, if someone's coming down Charlotte Furnace Road, they're going to say, oh, those are the only 2 people, those are the only 2 places I'm going to see people coming out of. Or you're coming down, you see a driveway, and you have somebody pulling out of their driveway. So you have somebody pulling out of your driveway, whether it's 100 feet past the opening of a roadway or 200 feet past the open roadway, that person's still going to be in that vicinity on a straightaway. So whether they're 100 feet or 200 feet different, it, to me, you know, you create a roadway just so that you have that vehicle in that particular spot, as a driving down the road, do you realize that, oh, coming to a road, someone's going to be pulling out of that road, coming to a driveway? It's the same thing. Where that location of the driveway, where that location of that road was, doesn't change. That, that 5 trips per day of coming out onto that road, mind you, across the street, it's, it's town property. There's nobody coming from the other side. We're not competing with, with driveways coming across, you know, a driveway, a driver coming down the road worrying about, oh, shoot, someone's coming from the right, someone's coming from the left. Basically, you have one spot coming down on the right-hand side. I, I, I mean, I, if you want to condition it so there's only 5 points of access, which would be common to make you feel better, I agree with Richard that basically, whether it's, whether that point, whether they come out of their driveway at, you know, 200 feet or at 300 feet or at 400 feet, you're going to see them as you're approaching them with it coming in.
What would make me feel better is if we had a traffic engineer to explain that the more decision points along the way, the more potential for, for problems and conflict.
Can somebody tell me other liquor for having, where is this a problem? Even on Charlotte Furnace Road, you have driveways 100 feet apart.
You create these roadways when, when you have curves and you have...
Actually have to back into Charlotte Furnace Road, and then you don't...
You want that point of access when you have a, 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 points where site distances are an issue. You want to make sure that that centralized point of entry has clear site distances even the way, so you know when you're, when you're coming onto your traffic, you're, you're safe. In this instance here, you can see 500 feet one way and almost 500 feet the other way before you pull out of your driveway, and these people are backing down their driveway onto Charlotte Furnace Road. These are 100 foot, as you can see, they're going to have a 60-foot, 50-foot, 60-foot no-disturbed buffer in the front, they're not going to back down a 100-foot driveway out onto Charlotte Furnace Road. Their houses are over 100 feet back off the road, so I think that's, you've got to look at the whole project in itself, you know, and...
I don't, I don't think the number of trips is that significant. It's still only about 10 trips per day is the average for an individual, single-family home. So it's not a lot of traffic, and it's not, not a, not a serious, but it's just that the more decision points you have along the way, along a travel path, the more potential you have for conflict.
10 houses, 10 trips a day, that's 100 decision points a day, right? Do you agree with that?
Yes.
What's it have to do with how many access points there are? There's going to be 100 decision points a day, whether you have 10 driveways or 1 driveway. There's going to be 100 a day.
No, but you're, you're missing the point about the idea of potential conflicts, because you're only going to have 1 car coming out, those 2 points, even if it's 100, but you have potential for 10 cars coming out at the same time from 10 different driveways.
Oh, Jesus. Now you're really stretching it.
No, I'm not. And that's, that's the point.
It's only logical that it, that it's true.
This is the same argument we used after Toby Roach.
And the fact that it's been built that way, was built that way back in the 70s, and you had 10,000 square foot lots with 100-foot spacing between driveways, is no point, is no reason to continue that thought process. Here we got an opportunity to reduce it down, to make an improvement on that, and it seems, I shouldn't, I shouldn't be saying a lot of things, it's not my job, but nevertheless, it seems to me that some improvements could be made to reduce the number of cuts here, and you can still have plenty of open space behind. The opportunity exists for doing that.
So I'll, I'll suggest it for the third time, that we table...
Continue.
Pardon me?
Continue.
We continue till next week, when we'll be prepared to, in 2 weeks to our next meeting, and be prepared to present our conditions.
Can, can we just get a little more clarity on the intent of a cluster development?
The intent of the cluster development is to reduce the cost of infrastructure, improve the, the, the value of development, and to preserve and protect certain features, environmental or natural features that...
Okay, so, so...
...be associated with the property.
All right, so the preservation is there, reduce the cost of infrastructure.
That's there.
Is that there?
Yes, it is, because they don't, they're not building 2 subdivision roads or 3 subdivision roads.
Okay, that's with the presumption the town takes over the cost of maintaining those roads, so.
No roads, there's no incremental road.
No, I'm saying that, that, exactly, right.
The potential to be made about...
And then the third condition was?
That you're, you're protecting something of value on the property.
Meaning what? The preservation of land again?
Meaning the open space has some, some value.
So there's only 2 conditions? I thought you rattled 3 conditions off.
I think he's saying your first and third were the same.
There's, there's 2 aspects to the first and third. One is the development itself, the, 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 the construction that takes place on it. The other is the open space, so you have more valuable development, and you have a valuable open space, preservation area.
Article 811, to encourage the preservation of valuable open space.
Check.
And to promote the more efficient use of land in harmony with its natural features, and to protect and promote the health, safety, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the town. That's how we define it.
And the home of the brave.
So you're preserving mature fire trees, and plus a...
So as we depart, I guess all I'm asking for the departure of this meeting is that we don't get into a debate next meeting whether this meets the spirit of a cluster development. Are we all in agreement with at least this, so we can move right on to conditions? Or is anybody still debating in their mind that this is not a cluster development?
I think we're at the point where it's just a matter of deciding what the conditions are.
I agree.
And, John, if you can just review for us, just so prior to the next meeting, we have choices on what you do with the open land. You can do the homeowners association. We can donate to the town. You could, you could, you could take it, yeah, you could take 1/10th of that open development and assign it to the property owners. Is that 1/10th consistent with their property line?
It wouldn't be, it would be essentially like you say, Mark, say you bought a piece of property with, with 9 other individuals, you would own 1/10th, you would own 1/10th of that property, essentially. So every time someone sells, they would have to convey their 10th share in that conveyance. So that's why I said it gets a little, so that's why you create an entity, or you could create a, it's kind of like a homeowner's association, essentially. What you really want to do is you want to create a corporation, essentially, where those 10 people are part of that corporation or part of that, so you have that 1 master, or the assessors office has that 1 person to bill.
Well, is it that, or does each individual property owner get 1/10th of the tax bill attached to this?
I'd have to check the assessors office if that's possible, but yeah, that could be as well, they would get...
Because it would seem to me that if you created a trust or something, a third entity to have ownership of that, they could just simply stop paying the taxes on it, and it would become...
Correct, become the town's problem, correct.
So my question for tonight's meeting simply is, which of those 3 choices would the developer prefer?
The homeowners, because we can't commit to somebody, I can't commit to you, I can't honestly say to you that the town's definitely going to take this piece. They have to accept it. I could deed, I could, we could have the property owner deed the town, but if the town says, nope, I don't want to accept that, then I can't, then this is in limbo.
Right, so the reason I'm asking this question is just so we don't waste energy on the other 2 options. When we're setting conditions, it's, here's the conditions for the developer and the homeowners association.
We're not going to pick the methodology that they, they use for preserving the open space, all we're going to do is say is, it can meet our criteria in the zoning, and will it satisfy our requirements for preservation of the land.
I can't, I can't suggest a condition that, John, before he creates an HOA, he reaches out to the town and the Wareham Land Trust to see if they'll take the land.
You should do that now.
I would write it into the permit, is how I would do it, that if, if he exhausts those 2 opportunities, he does an HOA. But you're going to try, that's how, that, but that's why, I'm going to come back with one of them anyway, that you try to do it that way, and if you can't, if they say no, then, then you're left with no recourse, so...
And I think you're going to find, or the developer's going to find that, he's going to have an easier time finding buy, potential buyers that don't have to deal with an HOA. Because there's, there's people, I'm trying to sell a home now that's in an HOA, and I've had 3 people look at it, love it, find out there's an HOA, and walk away.
Well, Pine Grove, for instance, 58 acres, we, we spent 2 years trying to find somebody to buy, to take that. From Wareham Land Trust, we couldn't find anybody to take that 58 acres, the 2 bonds up there, so that's why I ended up going to the HOA.
But if he does reach out and say no...
Well, then you've got no choice. Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that's the way it had to be.
Yeah, but they might buy the CI.
Yeah, we're not, I mean, that's now the homeowner's association, they own that now.
Or you could sell it to the solar farm guys.
Well, it seems to me the intermediate is give everybody 1/10th and scrap the HOA and...
Yeah, that makes sense, that makes the most sense, so that, and again, if the assessors can send out individual bills of some sort, I mean, I'm going to, I'll check in on that and how that works, what, what do they do if there's 10 owners of a property? I'll check with my attorney as well to see what they...
Except the bylaw doesn't allow you to do that.
It doesn't allow you to do that, exactly, yeah, that's not one of the options under the bylaw, so...
But I would argue the town taking over this 8 acres of land actually burns our Can the town maintain every bit of land that it already has on its books?
Not well.
This wouldn't be maintained if it was given to the land trust or, like-minded, they may seek to...
Well, you wouldn't want the town, like you said, because it didn't, you have the property owners calling up saying, hey, I saw somebody out my backyard, you know, send over the natural, you know, if someone's hunting in my backyard, send the town over. So now you put more work on Gary to come over and police that.
My kid broke his leg on the town's property, therefore I'm suing you.
Right, yeah.
Congratulations to the...
That's the downside to giving it to the town, it becomes public.
And that's why the town probably will say no. Yeah, that's why, exactly, that's so, I was right in my previous comments, so that it's going to be harder to get the town to take it.
Even if you convey it to a like-minded nonprofit, who doesn't prohibit them from allowing walking trails to the general home. So I would say the corporation or trust, the landlord should be the one.
Right, that's, that's the preferred approach, because then they police, there's 10 people policing it right behind their own house.
I think you go for the golf course option myself.
I will make a motion that we do not take any action until we visit the site.
Would you like to continue?
Is there a public, you're going to let the public speak, you're just going to continue?
You've just been waited.
I'm just listening to everybody. I was letting you all get it all out, so just open the public comment?
Yes, please come forward, they did advise.
I shall, I shall, that's what I'm going to do.
My name's Jim Manese, I live on Cranberry Highway. Years ago, as the president of the Wareham Land Trust, and cluster developments is a way to preserve open space, and 50% is only the minimum amount of open space that could be preserved, you could preserve more. I don't know if there's price points that the proponent is trying to hit with a...
Yeah, those are nice sized lots.
Or not. I know there is savings for the developers when they do cluster developments on the infrastructure. I don't know if you could condition the open space so that there could be a conservation restriction held on it to keep it in the open natural space, and maybe get a, one of, one of the local conservation groups to, to monitor it for a sum, which you pay upfront generally, and not have the option for, you know, golf courses, tennis courts, riding stables, blah, blah, blah. Again, I mean, conserving open space is a good thing, green space is a good thing. How it's done and what it looks like, it's up to you to really decide and to condition it for the proponent, saying this is what we want. Thank you.
Yeah, I was looking at a sample of placing a conservation restriction on it, and it would impair some of the uses that they're allowed unless somebody really took the time to break the CI.
That's what you condition it as.
And I don't think the developer's going to do that.
That requires, if, if you look underneath the, where it talks about the, whether it's a trust or whether it's a homeowner's association, there's a paragraph under that that says if it doesn't go to the town, it has to have a restriction put on it, and that gets recorded, so it's got to be kept as open space without...
Yeah, but I think the homeowners or somebody with skin and pain should be the ones to prepare that, not just take a CI off the table. I mean, to me, I wouldn't want to be with the users that are allowed there, you can get a bad conservation restriction that wouldn't let you walk across the property. Somebody needs to take the time to break the CI. Yes, sir?
Howard Smith, West Wareham, I have a question, I may have answered it already by looking at the map, but I was looking at the open space in the back, and regardless of who gets it, for whatever reason, what about access? I mean, if it is open to the public, you have to have access for those people, they're not going to be walking through somebody's private property, or do I assume that this L shape on the left is a...
That's the access.
That's the access, okay.
Well, that's an easement to the property behind it.
It's not an easement, it's, it's an access road, there's, there's 3 things that's doing. It's providing access to the road behind it, it's providing access to this parcel, depending on what it's going to be, and it's given actually a buffer for these residents to Bayside Agricultural, so that's what that, that's what that 80-foot wide, I think it's 8 or 50, 50-foot wide piece was, is intended for.
The existing access that's in the center of the property...
Yeah, those are all multiple plans, that just, yeah, that, that does not, that's still...
Is that going to go away?
Correct.
It may have, but I forget.
It's changed a few different times, so...
It's moved around.
Yeah, they get access right now from further down south, they come off of Charlotte Furnace to get up into that, that, that location, so they don't have access here, but this is in the future if anybody needs access to this parcel off of Charlotte Furnace, and to provide a buffer to Bayside Agricultural, because you don't want these residents right up on a commercial project, and exactly what Mr. Smith was saying, because we need to provide, you know, we just didn't want this floating piece of land out behind these properties either, with, because we didn't know what we were going to do with it, to provide access to, to it.
All right, thank you.
So there was a motion to continue to...
Yes, yes. 27th.
Seven o'clock.
Six?
We may have to change that to...
Six thirty.
Is that's appropriate, six thirty? Is that what we determined before?
We had determined six before.
I think we did six.
Six. Yep.
Do you think it would be... I didn't look to see how long it took to get through the preliminary business. It was probably a little long for me, but should we start a public hearing at six thirty?
It's about 45 minutes on the... On the day point.
Just we're talking about changing our start time to six o'clock.
Okay.
So, you don't... I'm sorry, you don't...
I just wonder if we should schedule a public hearing at six thirty.
Do we have to have a specific time for public hearings?
We've always scheduled everything.
Sorry? It's these specific times.
Well, we've always said, even though...
Why don't we just say six o'clock, like we have in there?
Didn't know if the board was... I think one of the reasons for starting earlier was to get out of here earlier. So, we don't want to be sitting on our hands waiting for six thirty to go over. Is there any other one that we could change the start time? So, we will be very, over 27, other than the posting.
I think I'll check to make sure, but I believe the posting should be sufficient.
Very good. Some motion's been made and seconded. Any further information or questions you have for the applicant? You're reading that on the table?
Aye.
Aye. If anybody wants a site plan for a site visit, you can take the copy, one of the copies along with you.
Six o'clock. Six. Thank you. Thank you, John.
Would you like to be notified of any site visits or is it okay?
I don't think it's pre... Yeah, it's all... They can land until you get to the solar field. That's all.
Solar field.
You can bring the coffee, right?
Yeah. No, I'm good. I'll see you in two weeks.
Solar field's first stand?
Not 100%.
It's the 27th, right? I don't even know if it's been built.
Yeah, it's something.
Seeing if I'm not sure.
Thanks. We were a few hours ago, year and a half ago.
I think when I walked back from this bar, it must have been done by...
I don't think this Spencer's...
Before you go, John. John, before you go.
Yep.
On the A and R, do you want to continue the A and R until...
Oh, yeah. For the next... Yeah. The... Yeah. So, did you table that? We open this as a joint public hearing or no?
Well, there's not a public hearing on the A and R, so...
Okay. So, kind of, you had to open the hearing though, because you have 21 days to... Well, let's see. It's a... I don't know. Yeah, we definitely continue the hearing to the 27th for the A and R as well.
Could you just send something ready that you...
We will. I'll send something over to the office that would put us on the agenda for the 27th. Agreed or continuance for the A and R.
Good. All right. Thank you.
Everything in order for that. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Oh, it's insanity over there. Why do you think they moved?
Well, I know the one that was brought up, that's some crazy...
Is it planned?
No. No. To Haunted Pond's the same way. It's completely divided, the neighborhood. Everybody is just fighting with one of those.
Those aliens.
They'll... They'll anything.
Other business. I'm sorry. Put me a table of master plan discussion.
Knock yourself out, George.
That look was classic. I should have been ready for that camera. Do you want these... They're in the files?
They're in the files already.
Master plan discussion. So, let's just recap where we're at. We've had some scheduled workshop meetings. We have been through the master plan as a board in a couple sessions. We've made our changes. We've made some edits. We've tuned it up. We've had the last five weeks for review of that. I think that our next step is to discuss any last, any final changes. I'll call them final. Any more changes, additional changes that members may feel that need to be done, and see if we are at a point where we could decide that with the change, with any changes that we agree on tonight, that we are at a final point. Based on the magnitude of those changes, we can decide whether they require a reprint and a re-review, or if it's just a... If it's a minor change, we could approve with agreed-to edits. I haven't heard any feedback. I've delivered a hard copy of the master plan to all the members, and I haven't heard any feedback. So, I guess the question right now, is there any additional? George, I'm a little concerned that Michael's not here too. I think something like the master plan, if there was to be a vote to approve that...
It shouldn't include him.
I personally think that all members should be here.
He's sick.
So, if it'd be Mike... I think you could still have a vote without him here, but I would prefer you not.
Yeah, I would. I would say I'd have a whole board where...
I will say, I did read it three times.
You got to waste your go to catch me.
So, there won't be any spelling from that person?
No. I'm sure there's some in there.
It's riveting. It's like watching paint dry. But I did take the time to reread it several times, because you delivered a hard copy. I wanted to do the...
I appreciate it.
But I agree. I think Michael should be here if we're going to approve.
Fair enough. I think we're...
And Richard, I read it also, believe it or not. Not three, twice. And I have, if we can discuss thoughts. So, I asked myself, we approve it tonight, what happens tomorrow? What I think is missing is the mechanism. Well, interestingly, the earlier version was labeled Wareham Master Plan Vision. And again, all the credit to you for making this happen, okay? So, that's beside the... I mean, that's understood. I... There are, in the first two goals, there are 11 responsibilities of the planning board, among others, with others, with the redevelopment authority, with the planning department. And when I went through it, I got concerned. Five volunteers, meeting twice a month, I do not think can implement the recommendations of the plan. And secondly, the fact that the responsibilities for each strategy are spread over several entities is, I think, there ought to be a quarterback for each, because if you have more than one party responsible for something, nobody's responsible for it. But the biggest concern I have is the mechanics of it. When you read it, I mean, what do we do tomorrow after we've approved it? What's the next step? What do we do? I'm at a loss how to make... And my favorite, which was number three under land use goal three, create design guidelines for commercial development in Wareham Village.
I would never get that one.
And where have you heard that? And I've got this in cap, you know, 14-point font. And it says, "Using images and text to describe numerous site and building characteristics ranging from architecture and materials to site planning." When are we going to do this? So, I'm not being negative. I'm just want to get to a point where we actually infuse into the plan the mechanisms also. Do we break up into groups? Meeting here twice a month isn't going to cut it.
Well, on something like that, with your architectural guidelines, that's something where you could come forward and say, "I would like to create a subcommittee to create these guidelines in conjunction with the master plans or recommendations." This is how I'm going to execute it.
My thought.
Like, how many years ago now, we had a zoning bylaw rewrite committee? It was a member or two from the planning board, some from ZBAs, some from private, that met, I think for over a year, and came up with a rewrite of our zoning bylaws, which they then, you know, it was in tune with the master plan. It was, you know...
I agree.
It's funny, every time I see that somebody mentioned the master plan in the past, it's to try to make the project look better. But, you know, oh, this is in tune with the master plan. That said, you know, in 1862, we would do it this way.
Yes, I agree. And shouldn't we do the same thing for each of those goals? There are 14 applied... In the first two land use categories, there are 14 responsibilities imposed on the planning board, one of which is this, design guidelines. By the way, I would volunteer to head that committee.
Write that down, George.
Except, no, no, except, wait a minute.
You have a committee of...
No, no. On the record, no, no, I'm speaking on the record. I have met resistance from the town, from town fathers, about having this design guidelines. Excuse me, I should add, there ought to be a design review body for certain projects. And I tie the two together. We've spent two hours tonight on this project. We didn't have to spend two hours. If our procedures were set up properly, and I don't understand why we have to have open meetings. I... A few of us, two, three of us could sit with the designer of that project. Charlie has a beautiful idea, and I'm not prepared to... Did we close that subject? I don't know. I'm not prepared to buy this strip along the road. So, I suggest, I agree with your suggestion. We should form groups, independent groups, take these various tasks. I mean, can I just read a couple of... I mean, "To improve the village's appearance, implement recommendations of the town's vacant and underutilized properties survey to improve the maintenance and appearance of eyesore properties." Who's going to do that?
Can I respond?
You want to volunteer? Go ahead.
Let me respond.
Yeah. Oh, forgive me, before I interrupt you. Also, the... It's... That's in the realm of Wareham Redevelopment Authority and Planning Board. Go ahead, sorry.
So, when I first got involved with the master plan, I had the very... I had very similar concerns that you did. And I decided, and I was at the point where I said, "This is impossible" to come up with this project plan for all the things that we need to do in the town. And so, what I did was, in my mind, I broke it into two halves. I broke it into a goals half and an implementation half. And I just, I decided in my mind that the goals half is the master plan. And the master plan goes no further than the goal. It has recommendations for who should be responsible. Planning board is a big hitter in there. You're absolutely right. And if you remember, we took out an awful lot of things that said, "We'll do think by certain dates and whatnot." The project implementation specifics. So, I look at it as our wish list and our goal list. And all we're... All I'm trying to get to, the point I'm trying to get to here for this town is to say, "We agree where we want to go. And now that we've agreed where we want to go, let's start looking at how we get there. What do we do tomorrow?" We start finding out which of those 52 are most important. And we take the top one or two, and we start finding people to spearhead action committees to do that, whether it be boards in this town, whether it be board members in a collaborative effort, like in the Congress proposal, or whether it be citizen action committees, whatever it is. But that's what we do tomorrow. But we can't go there tomorrow until this town has an approved list of goals. And for me, it's the approval part.
Accepted. In my mind, the master plan, it doesn't have to be the way I'm saying it, but I was expecting that the master plan would not only show you the goal, express the goal, but how to do it.
So, but isn't it kind of impractical to have an implementations timeline, resource requirements, and budget requirements for 52 tasks?
I don't know. I would like, if this goes to the town this way, if this goes for approval this way, then I don't get my design review committee in here.
Why not?
Because it's not stated.
Well...
That's what I'm saying.
The statement that I disagree with is that we can't have these goals without the master plan. You know, the master plan, like we said before, is a 30,000-foot overview of everything. And there's nothing there that couldn't be done with or without the master plan.
Absolutely true. Absolutely true.
And there's nothing that says you can't come up with something by yesterday, and now you go, "Gee, we didn't quite get that right in the master plan. Let's do it this way."
We could say we didn't get it quite right in the master plan and do it differently tomorrow. Be crystal clear on that.
So, those are my two comments. And having a quarterback for each of the strategies rather than leaving it undefined, but...
I'm trying really, really hard not to mix design, I go back to my professional age, design with implementation, you know. Figuring out where we want to go and then getting in the car and stepping on the gas are two very different things. And we're just trying to figure out where we want to go right now. And until we do that, I'm not opening the car door.
You know, one of the, one of the things about the design review committee that I see is you're creating another hurdle for an applicant to come in and first get that... It's... The intent is good, but the implementation could be cumbersome of somebody coming in with a project in this town. What I'd like to see is somebody coming in and can open up our zoning bylaw and see design criteria, so they know what to expect before they put something down in front of anybody, whether it's a review board. I'd like them to know what spacing they want before they put paper to pencil.
There's a good example. This discussion right here is on implementation, right? This discussion right here is on implementation, right? Assuming that the goal has been agreed to, that we're gonna have a design review committee. For me, that's cart before the horse.
In my own experience, the more successful cities and towns are those that have well-defined guidelines and a board to make sure that, to oversee.
To execute.
Reading the guideline, then anybody can sit here and say, "We followed it," when it becomes a matter of aesthetics or a matter of subjective evaluation, unless you can have someone in the, early in the process to review. Look, it can go either way, of course, I'm just saying to you that, and I've been a pain in the neck about this to you, I know, from the beginning, but the successful cities that I've worked in and towns have design review boards. Anyway, let's move on, though, but these are my two comments about the plan, if we...
I don't think anyone, I personally, Ken, you have a lot more experience with other towns and their master plans, is the master plan the implementation tool, or is it the implementation steering document? I mean, how do you look at it?
The master plan should be a vision, it should be goals, realistic goals, and it should have an implementation plan that comes along with it. And it can specify who leads the implementation of each of the goals. And it can say who has to be involved to make it happen. Implementation is just as important, but it's one element of a properly done master plan.
In the master plan, I didn't, and maybe I should read it again, I didn't see anything that would prevent the tearing down of the Toby homestead and Belookin coming into Main Street at a parking lot. I didn't see anything that would prevent a used car sales lot on Main Street with a hundred-and-sixty-foot curb cut. Gas station after gas station, I mean, let's go with this and I'll support it, but...
But there is a goal in there to preserve the character of the villages of Wareham, onset in Wareham Village, right?
Yeah.
And to implement that goal, you go look at your zoning regulations and you make decisions about how big your curb cuts are gonna be, how many gas stations you're gonna have, what kind of businesses you're gonna run.
That's fine, as long as we can redo the zoning bylaw and limit the type of use.
The master plan doesn't say you can't do anything.
But then, it's too broad, too, then. It's too...
So, the discussion we're having right now is right where I thought we were gonna end up, and that's, we're at the point where why do we have a master plan at all? That's, isn't it?
I'm, no, no, can we, look, I don't want to go backwards. I'm just pointing out that I think it's weak in its enforcement, in some aspects of it. Let it go and then we'll start. I mean, tomorrow, what we would do is have the same discussion. What do we do? How do we prevent the tearing down of the Toby homestead building?
I think you have to think of it more like a pyramid. At the peak is the vision, the bigger view of what the town should be and could be as a community. Underneath that are the goals, and the goals that start to talk about the bigger directions that the town should take to accomplish that vision.
Agreed.
And then it starts to go down to the objectives and starts speaking more specifically about the different actions. There's only so much, so many different alternatives that you can pick out. I mean, is it, you also want to have some guideline in there about water whiz and the parking lot, and the expansion of their parking lot. You eventually get to the point where you deal with the specifics of certain conditions within the community, but you have to build from a bigger view first and then go down. And as you set your priorities, you follow the line down to the more specific implementation and actions that are appropriate to the bigger goal and the overall vision of what you want the town to be.
To your point, Emmanuel, I think you're looking for too much out of it right now. Right now, we have, right now, this town doesn't have anything that's an approved plan, a vision. We don't have one that's quote approved. We don't, an approval gets filed with the department.
Housing and community.
Yeah.
By a master plan, opens up opportunities for grass, basically.
Yeah, yeah, look, I'm not opposing at all.
I understand, I understand, but you're a step ahead of the rest of us. Well, you're at the same point, maybe I'm down there, too, but I'm taking baby steps. You're taking great big ones.
Yeah, no, that's fine, that's fine. One other of my concerns, reading the traffic study part, you know, it occurred to me that the Department of Transportation is doing studies for Route Six, for Route Twenty-Eight, da-da-da, and then it occurs to me, you know, Main Street is becoming nothing more than a highway, a connection, you know, so that kind of big-picture planning has to somehow be dealt with. So, you're telling me, then, that tomorrow morning, there'll be a committee formed to address the issues that are happening in the traffic with...
I didn't say that at all.
Oh, then what happens tomorrow morning?
I get up, have some coffee.
All right, I stop. Thank you for listening.
Now, your points are well taken. But if you remember, I've been also advocating a Congress concept in parallel with this to address the issues that you're talking about. It's one thing to have an approved master plan, it's another thing to execute against it. And I don't think we have the facilities in this town, the resources, or the people in this town, to go do that.
Right, right.
And, because the plan doesn't do you any good at all unless you're gonna go execute against it.
Well, that's my concern, that it's just gonna sit there.
And I'll give you an update on the Congress, because I've had two meetings since our last planning board session on the Congress, and I'll give you an update on that, so...
When?
What?
Update?
I'll give you an update tonight if you like.
Sure.
But what I want to do is, I want to make sure that we're not unnecessarily delaying or procrastinating on making a decision on approving this. Now, I'm very disappointed that Michael's not feeling well and couldn't be here, because I really wanted to see where this board stood on making a vote. I'm worried that the board is reluctant to make a vote, from the point of view that they're reluctant to make a commitment or to put, to step out and say, "We are the planning board, and we're gonna execute our responsibilities." I'm concerned about that, so...
If tomorrow morning, I can start the design review process, I'm for it. Let's vote.
So, the next meeting is the twenty-seventh.
I think I'm gonna be sick.
I'm gonna be sick, yeah.
It's coming around.
It's gotta be the twenty-seventh or March, because I'm like here in February, so...
So, I would hope that if there are any concerns in the text of the document, that members of this board would share them prior to the meeting, so people can at least have a chance to reflect on them, not necessarily comment, but at least understand. I don't know if there is any issues. I mean, if we had to call for a vote, whether to pass tonight, or whether there'd been objections? I don't know. I'm dying to find out. I mean, can we have a state vote? Or is there a process for that?
It's not a, you can have a vote and revote if you want.
No, there's a, pardon me?
Strong vote.
Yeah, there's a legal term for it. And it's a non-binding vote, just to get a sense of where you're at.
Non-binding vote, it sounds good.
That's right, that works.
We do a lot of those, we do a lot of those, right?
So, I don't know, from what I'm hearing now, it sounds like it's gonna be strictly a master plan.
Jesus.
I'm gonna have to look at it in the light now. Doesn't sound like it's at thirty thousand feet anymore.
Got to glance something.
Design with implementation.
Well, I just know where some implication, some applications in the past have been detrimental to the area.
And those are the committees we're gonna put you on.
Yeah, like, you pick out a specific use that you don't like, and you apply it to the whole neighborhood, and the whole neighborhood has to suffer because of one entity.
So, I'll just ask, Emmanuel, do you have any issues that you need changed in the master plan before you could vote to approve it?
Well, only what I mentioned.
Would that stop you from approving it as is?
Not really.
Michael?
No, I'm not settled.
George?
I don't know, should I get more specific?
You should say whatever is on your mind.
No, no, I just, I worry about implementation, because...
That's where we gotta get to. And as far as I'm concerned, we can't get to implementation until we know what the plan is.
Well, it's very subjective, and depending on who's implementing, it can go very badly or it can go very well.
Sure, absolutely.
Well, George, can we, this is where we need some specificity, you know?
I hear you. Mark, do you have any issues you want to discuss tonight?
I'm gonna hold reserve any thoughts till after the Iowa primaries.
I, you know, my feeling is that I don't think there's anything destructive here.
I'm gonna start here for a moment.
If we don't engage this somehow, we're not gonna get any, we're not gonna get any public comment back, we're not gonna know whether we made the right decision. I don't think there's any downside and regrets from approving this. I look at it as, these are guidelines, they're foundational thinking, there's nothing binding us to make decisions to this plan only, unless I'm misunderstanding something. It gives us the same flexibility to treat everything on a case-by-case basis and balanced. So, I think it's a mistake that we just keep, just keep talking about it and hashing it over. Let's just execute a decision, if it's the right decision or wrong decision, we'll know in very short order.
I had a director who taught me very early on in my career to make decisions, and if I'm right, one out of three times, I'll be very, very successful, because I'll find out a good time for fast.
Well, I think a lot of, you know, how I conduct my life, particularly on the business side right now, as a small business owner, is that you can't wait to get this thing perfect. You'll go bankrupt if you try to get this to a perfect state.
Well, I thought of an example. Very recently, it was mentioned that businesses along Merchant's Way should turn their facades around and face the river, and we're gonna make Merchant's Way one way, Main Street the other. Now, somebody that doesn't have a business on Main Street, or possibly had never been in business, might be making that decision. And you're gonna impose that on tenants and landlords and business owners on Main Street?
That's what government does.
Not my, not government I have control of.
Our government is representative government to make decisions.
That's not representative, that's dictatorial.
You're, I think you're complaining about a person that has an opinion different than others, than nothing more.
Yeah, but isn't, I don't know if that's what we're being asked to do right now. We're simply being asked to approve a guiding document, check off a box whether it's consistent with the spirit of the master plan.
The spirit, but to take it from a spirit to...
Implementation.
Somebody else's idea about what you should do and enforce that, that is wrong on any scale.
So, based on your concern, George, what would you do to mitigate that?
Wherever that enforcement is, that it be...
Well, the only challenge...
With that, it's not dictatorial.
How much in the hands of the...
We had a, we had an economic developer in this town that screwed up Main Street, but he told people at a public meeting somewhere else, "The people in my town don't know what's good for them." That's what I fear, people coming in from, that have no knowledge of the area, telling us what's good for us.
I'm not sure what that has to do with the master plan.
When the discussions that I hear between master plan and cabinet of whatever county, slowly, I see it evolving into not just a vision and suggestion, but an edict.
But don't you think that the processes that we have in town around a zoning board of appeals, a planning board, a board to select, and a town administrator, and town meetings are designed to keep all that in check?
They go six ways for Sunday.
If it follows some sort of open path and not a backroom deal, yeah.
Couldn't agree more.
But I think...
But I'm not gonna, I'm sorry, Mark, but to say we're not gonna do anything because we could screw it up is why we are in the situation we are in this town right now.
Well, you said, say, for at least ten years, or probably more, there's been a plan to put a boardwalk down the river from the Narrows all the way through Monday.
There's been an idea, there's never been a plan.
There was a plan drawn up.
Oh, I've seen the pictures, but it's not a plan.
But ten, fifteen years? That hasn't happened. But you're suggesting that businesses should go into debt to make their part of it happen? Just to use that Main Street Merchant's Way as an example.
Okay.
People have that concern. Do they really want us to turn that building around? They have that concern.
I can't even, George, I can't even begin to respond to that. It's just so out there and hypothetical and unrealistic, I don't even know what we're talking about.
Many years of seeing what's going on with agencies similar to what's been created, I've seen...
I mean, I hear, but like I said, I hear you advocating do nothing. I'm not saying do nothing, I'm saying be right by people.
Does that mean I don't get my design review agency?
No, you know what's gonna happen if we do that, though? Now, we gotta have the cops standing on the other side of the crosswalk for the pot shop because they gotta be looking this way to Main Street.
With double the crossing guards.
But, just in response to all of that, Mr. Chairman, I think that, and I've said this over and over, this board is open to listening to public input. There isn't an action that we perform as a group up here that doesn't allow the public to sit in those seats and come up and speak on their behalf. So, whatever this plan guides us to make our decisions on, there is gonna be a voice, there's gonna be an opportunity for the public to speak on each one of those. If they stay silent, then just like every other decision that gets made here, it gets made by five individuals. There's five bubbas up here making the decision for twenty thousand people. So, it's not that we're, I don't see that the plan now permits us to work with autonomy making decisions for the town. There's still multiple layers to get this in place, but also multiple layers to appeal our decisions as well. I think that's true. I think the state, you know, the, this, the work that Richard's done here, that we've all supported him doing, is a step in the right direction for sure. It's not an implementation step, that has to, but we can't even think about discussing implementation until we get some acknowledgement that this thing exists. This thing doesn't exist other than, you know, a grant writer writing it for us right now.
Well said.
It's twice tonight, too.
God, it is.
On a roll.
Yeah, on a roll. You can call me Ish Meow.
But I like what Mark said, to you, Emmanuel, there's no point in discussing implementation. And how'd you finish that up?
I can't. Bob, play that back for us, will you?
But you understand what I'm doing?
Oh, shit.
Anyway, I'm done. So, please, let's be prepared to...
Vote the master plan in the next meeting?
Yeah, make our stand. And if you have heartburn over something that's gonna stop you from being happy with it, let's get it on the table now. We have ample opportunity.
Well, it's there in the agenda item, right? So, it's giving public notice that the board will vote on the adoption of the master plan?
The only thing that I... The only thing that I did ask that didn't get put in was the encourage the preservation of existing buildings.
Encourage the preservation of existing buildings?
Existing historical buildings or all buildings, period?
Yeah, but I bet we could twist around one of those to make that happen.
That was the only thing that I had mentioned before that got left out.
Yeah, okay.
Forming of a design review committee.
I'll co-chair, I mean, I'll be your vice chair, not your, not the lead chair, I'll be your vice chair on that, if you want. You know I got energy.
I know, but some of your votes, I don't want from you.
Yeah, that could be a clash. Okay.
Let's stay friends.
We have another agenda item, do you want to hear about that quickly on the Congress? Where my head is right now, and I've shared this with some people in town, is that I've got a lot more interest and a lot more enthusiasm from private citizens than I have from board members. And I've kind of come to the conclusion myself, and I don't know if I'm right or wrong, but I think I'm right, that our boards are struggling to keep up with the day-to-day work that they have in front of them. And what we're talking, what I'm talking about on implementation of master plan ideas in a forward-looking way is incremental cycles. And that was very incremental cycles. It's, I need, I need more from more, I need more cycles than we're currently being spent right now by people in this town. I made that clear at my last two sessions, and it became obvious, I, I mean, this board we struggle keeping up. I'm sorry?
What, you mean, meetings, you think you need a meeting between a reach board to accomplish? You say incremental cycle, you think you need an additional meeting per month to accomplish?
Yeah, the Congress, the Congress meeting, that's the incremental meeting, incremental people cycles, another meeting that people have to attend.
But not a full board?
Oh, no, no, no.
A member or other board?
No.
Which would be a meeting of the Congress?
Yes, but it's still incremental cycles.
I was under the impression that department heads would be involved in this, too, would be.
The way I had proposed it was all department heads, oh, I'm sorry, department heads, not board chairman.
Correct.
I hadn't got to that point, no.
Not Ken, he wouldn't have.
Yeah, I wouldn't have.
He doesn't want me.
But I mean, if you're dealing with a large project, you're going to, wouldn't you want your building commissioner or your conservation people involved?
And I don't have a problem with that.
And that would be on an invitation basis, is that what you're thinking?
That's what I'm thinking, but it's totally flexible. Do you think the building commissioner's got cycles to come to, come to work on some of these projects we're talking about? I don't think he does.
Well, I'm, I'm wondering, if you're getting the boards on the same page, shouldn't the people, shouldn't they be on the same page?
So who's going to lead this Congress? Who's going to be the president of the Congress there? And manage people to come and do things?
The only comment I've made on that is it's chaired by the planning board.
Oh. So you're going to like tell everybody you have to come to meetings and do things, you know, all the other boards?
Potentially.
And change bylaws to do that?
I'm sorry?
I mean, how do you enforce that? How do you do that?
You invite them and hope they come?
Okay. I, I think.
I'm not doing very well on that.
You know, I think if you focused on the boards that, right now, like, oh, wait a second. I think if you like backed it, backed it down a little and focused on the boards that are judicatory in a sense where, you know, your board, zoning board, ConCom, and try to get your group together and working as a, as, you know, as a unit, you might be a little more successful in pushing it forward and, and moving that part of your town government forward. Just from my perspective, I know, I think Mark, last summer, mentioned that, you know, maybe the selectmen should bring a group together, so I brought it to the selectmen, made a suggestion, we bring the different committees together occasionally. And, so I mentioned the selectmen, and you asked me not to do it for a couple of weeks till you got the master plan done. So, then the Congress popped up, and the master plan's still not finished. So we should kind of like try to do one thing at a time, maybe, get each thing done. It's just my perspective on it. Thanks. Done?
Motion?
Tom, propose bylaw here, two, one more item here.
We have, right now, we have on the, the agenda, the hearing on the duplex, definition of duplexes. I wanted to find out if there was any other bylaw that the, that the planning board wants to take forward. For town meeting. One of the ones we had last, in the fall, was the signed bylaw, when the attorney general had explained to us that our signed bylaw, Article 11, was not exactly in keeping with the Supreme Court decision. No, all we did was, is one part, when we rejected the change in the, in the. In the content. But it wasn't complete throughout the, the Article 11. It was only for that one part that had been brought forward for consideration. You know how you have to have, you have to have it very specific, you can't expand or, well, you can contract a little bit, but you can't expand the, the concept being brought forward as an article to town meeting, unless the town moderator says it's okay. And she says no, so I'm not going to expand beyond, so we have the rest. We have the rest of Article 11 in the zoning bylaw to, to amend, so that the content is taken out from the descriptions.
Do we have time to address that before it's submitted for town meeting?
No, articles have to be invited February 2nd, I believe.
So we have.
That article is already written, I believe.
This is on, yeah.
The sign.
Right, it's already written.
So that's, we're going to go, we still have to do a public hearing on it.
And we have to do a public hearing on the duplex as well, too.
Those would be on the 27th.
That language hasn't changed, though, right?
No, it hasn't changed.
We can do the public hearing after they've been submitted. We have to hold a public hearing, I think, prior to town meeting.
Two weeks, you're right.
Did I see what the issue was?
However. What we're getting into, and what I'd like to see going forward, is that you hold your public hearings before you submit your articles, so that when you submit your article, the content of your article is what you bring in forward to town meeting. We're getting into issues where we're putting articles on the warrant that are placeholders.
I agree with putting it, giving you the finished article. But as far as the public hearing goes, there's never been enough time, even prior to submitting the article, to change it and hold another public hearing before town meeting.
Then hold it until the fall.
So then, if we come to the public hearing and there's no issues, we can move it forward at town meeting, and if there are issues, we just withdraw it.
And that's the issue that we're having, George, is we're putting articles on that aren't fully prepared. And that's what we're trying to fix. If you're not ready for it, wait till the fall. If you don't have it ready and you don't have your public hearings, then don't put it on till the fall. That's all I'm asking you. Yes, you can put it on, yes, you can have your public hearing, but we're putting placeholders on, and we don't have all the information, and it makes it very difficult to make judgment calls.
But on this particular, these two particular articles, they're already written.
It was already discussed in the, in the.
Okay, so if you want to, want to take them forward, that's fine, but what happens if you have your public hearing and you decide that you want to change them?
Then we can't change them on the floor without an amendment.
Right.
So we would seek to withdraw. I mean, it's always been, it's always been difficult here, even before your terms moderator is, there isn't enough time to propose an article, have a public hearing, change it, and have another public hearing before town meeting.
And that's what we're trying to fix, because we need to do better. We need, if you're not ready to do them, if you're not ready to write them, have your public hear, have your public hearing, then, then write them, then submit them, then put them off, don't put them on. And that's what we're trying to fix going forward, because we have way too many placeholders that, and if we're trying to get into electronic voting, these things have to be done earlier rather than later. And so this is what we're trying to correct, because we have been very lax in putting articles on the warrant that aren't fully vetted, the selectmen don't have time to discuss them, they get them on the night they close the warrant, they haven't had a chance to look at them. So what we're asking is that we try to do a little bit better, plan a little, plan ahead. You know that sign that used to have the plan ahead? Just try to plan ahead, and if, if you're not ready for them, if you're ready for them, that's fine, but if you're not, hold them off until the next meeting.
Well, I think the cases that we've encountered where that's been the case, it's when articles have been lobbed at us with our names stuck on.
Exactly.
And we.
I agree.
And we've objected to that in the past, and if there's any attempt, we won't support those articles. I won't support them, I won't get them on town meeting forums or whatever. You either get up to us, have us participate in the construction of the articles, and make us a part of the process, so.
Couldn't agree with you more.
We're not going to support it.
I agree, totally agree with you.
But in this case, the articles that we're talking about passing on to a town meeting have been developed as of last year, so these have had, already had a lot of discussion.
Okay.
Should we have the public discussion after that?
Yeah. I mean, you, you have to have something ready for the public to know what they're, the lead wants to show up at the hearing. The last minute articles, I told you, we don't have any. That just causes everybody a lot of heartburn, it really bends the definition of due notice.
It does, and to be very honest with you, we had seven revisions to the motions last year, right up until four o'clock the day of town meeting. Sometimes we get them as much as five minutes of seven. We're putting up our feet down this time and saying, "No more."
Good for you.
No more.
Yeah, when it comes to that, you've got to come up with an amendment, you can't change the substance of an article.
When they go before the select, the select, the warrant comes at the hand of the selectmen, and if we go back many years, Charlie, you probably would agree, that these articles were discussed by the board of selectmen with all the information that they had before they put them on the warrant. Now they, they get them, put them on the warrant, and then they discuss them. So, you know, somehow we need to change that by having all the boards, committees, commissions, and department heads know that going forward, they've got to get this done ahead of time and get them done correctly, so that when they go on the warrant, they are going to be finished, the motions can be written the next day. Most towns send them out with all the information two weeks ahead of time to the public, and we need to do a better job doing that.
This is why people don't want to go to town meeting, George. I mean, I sit up back, and every time something like this comes up and it gets shot down, basically these boards and committees are saying, "We're not prepared, we're not ready." That's what makes these people just say, "Why the hell am I coming? It's a waste of time." You know, like I said, I sit up there, I hear these comments, I don't.
I, I am totally baffled that you can put a spending proposal in with no number attached to it.
Well, to some degree, you don't want to always include specific numbers, because that limits the scope of the article, and you can't amend it on the floor, except within a very short window of opportunity. But you should have a very good con, if you have a good concept that you know that those five cruises are going to cost you exactly this, then yes, you can do it. But if you haven't gone out to bid and you have no idea what that number's going to be, you don't want to put that number in the warrant article. And a lot of towns are prepared and do that. They do their bidding or do whatever they have to do beforehand, so that they do have a, there are many towns that have all that information in their warrant articles, but that's because they're well-prepared. And for some reason, our town isn't, and we've struggled with it, I've struggled with it for nine years to try to get people to understand that we do need to be a little more prepared. I mean, we know town meeting's coming in April, we know it's coming in October, so there really isn't any excuse for it, so we can't go to electronic voting until we start doing a better job preparation.
Understood. I understand your frustration as well.
Now.
Motion?
Yeah, let's set a public hearing date for February 10.
Nice try.
Motion would be to set a public hearing date for November 10 at the town meeting.
So motion.
Second.
Motion made by Richard, and seconded by Mike. Discussion, oral favor.
Aye.
opposed.
Motion to close the meeting?
Second.
Oral favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at 10:20.